We're going to call to order the Tuesday, January 19th meeting of the Cordera Town Council. Rebecca, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Casissa?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Avazia?
Here.
Vice Mayor Kunhardt?
Here.
Here, thank you. Please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation. Under God.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Now it's open time for public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on anything that is not on our agenda tonight. We're going to have three minutes a person. So if you'd like to speak to anything that's not on our agenda, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. I'm going to start with Roy and then go to Camille.
Good evening. I'm addressing the Climate Adaptation Plan Draft dated November 2020. The plan is disappointing, confusing, and difficult to read. And climate change, as our death and taxes, is certain. The draft is missing specific and detailed historical and current data for weather, temperature, rainfall, elevation, bayside, hills, tides, etc. There's no mention of obtaining tools that capture report ongoing environment data in Cordera Madera. Including the historical data in the report would benchmark this data and enable the comparison of actual physical conditions and changes in Cordera Madera going forward. Let's determine actual rates of data change for our area. The report does not indicate the primary cause of flooding, which is settlement, 95% plus. It's not sea level rise. Sea level is mentioned 105 times and settlement 18 times in the draft, but only in conjunction with constructing new levees, not the settlement of our properties and existing structures. The draft indicates extreme rainfall from atmospheric river dumping, but ignores historical records from the Water District in Noah. Rainfall during the 1890s was higher than now, and in 1862, California experienced an arid storm where the Central Valley became an inland sea. The Flood Control Advisory Board's Mariner Cove Coastal Flood Protection Design Considerations Report dated March 12, 2018 contained elevation data from 1985 and 2005 and bay mud depth charts. This report with its key data isn't even referenced in the draft. Not including historical data records obscures facts and reality and can be quite misleading. A suggestion: Develop an objective questionnaire for residents to complete and determine their understanding and knowledge of actual physical, that is, temperature, rainfall, winds, elevation, settlement, etc. Changes that have occurred from the time they have established residence in Cordera Madera. See if the residents can provide events and actual data related to historical environmental changes. As an example of events, my garage has been flooded three times in the nearly half a century my wife and I have lived in Cordera Madera. And all three times were due to a ruptured water main, not climate change. There's time before the upcoming workshops to address these significant shortcomings and remove the ad nauseam redundancies in the plan as currently drafted. Hopefully those working on the plan address these issues. I would welcome working with members of the adaptation team on the issue.
Very much, Roy. Thank you, sir. And we're going to go next to Camille.
Hello, everyone. My name is Camille Ray, and I'm a high school student in Marin County and a spokesperson for the Youth Advisory Council, which is a group of students advocating for substance use reduction and prevention. At the last Cordera Madera City Council meeting on December 15th, a few of our members made public comments about Cordera Madera's smoke-free housing policy, highlighting the severe health risks associated with secondhand smoke and explained why all multi-unit housing needs to be 100% smoke-free. Additionally, we sent a follow-up letter to each member of the Cordera Madera Board, restating our evidence and reasoning for the position we took at the meeting. It also included responses to questions and concerns that arose from the city council members at the December 15th meeting about the policies we mentioned. In short, I'm here tonight to bring up the issue of Cordera Madera's smoke-free housing policy and ask if you have any updates that I can report back to my fellow advisory council members.
Great. Thank you very much, Camille. And those are all the hands up we have from members of the audience right now. Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comment?
Yes, we did receive some emailed public comments for for open time. The first is from Laura Brysky, who has a comment about LED streetlights in our town, and she says, please do not install LED streetlights in our town. They are too harsh and too bright and may even have negative health implications. LED lights are light pollution. I am very opposed to wasting town dollars to make things worse for town residents. And that comment was split between two emails, so both those emails have been archived on the town's agenda. And the next one is from Ryan Gardner regarding the Climate Adaptation Plan, who sent an email to our publiccomment@tcmail.org address for the record. And it says, hi there, I sent the same to Cordera Madera Town Council, but want to make sure our family concerns regarding the proposed CAP for Cordera Madera are publicly memorialized. I do not believe that there has been adequate due diligence to warrant any sort of approval on this matter at this time specifically. Section 3 of the plan is extremely aggressive, not only from the perspective of a property owner, but also from the position of a wildlife and endangered species protection advocate. Community canvassing for perspective and feedback has been lacking, as well as alternatives to the massive engineering efforts that are proposed. We will be attending upcoming meetings to reiterate concerns and hope that the town of Cordera Madera seriously reconsideres the ramifications and impact of several pieces to this overarching project. Thanks, Ryan Gardner.
Great, thank you, Rebecca. And I'll just note that we did get a number of emails, feedback related to the Climate Adaptation Plan, in addition to what was just read that were not specified as being for public comment for this council meeting. But they're still going to be entered into the public record of comments with regards to the Climate Adaptation Plan, and those comments will all be available for the public to view at any time. We've also got a hand up from Hoff in the audience, and then Todd, it looks like you want to say something, so we'll go to you next. So we're going to bring on Hoff.
Hi, friends. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Steve Hoffmar here, 146 Willow. Just getting in touch about the future development, about the whole corner. I think a lot of the residents from Pixley, Tamalpais, and Willow have heard about Town Hall today with this asbestos, and, you know, we've been working with Todd diligently.
So Steve, we're actually, this is public comment, it sounds like, related to the Town Hall project, right?
The whole corner, really, post office, fire department, and Town Hall, Eli?
Okay, so we are actually going to be taking public comments specific to that development project or potential project, I guess I should say, later on in this meeting. That's going to be an agenda item that's coming up.
Okay.
Would you mind just holding your comment until we get there?
No, no problem. I was just, I wasn't sure. Thank you.
No problem. Appreciate it a lot. Okay, so we don't have any other hands up for open time comments for items that are not on tonight's agenda, so we'll go to Todd.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So regarding the the potential revision to the ordinance regarding smoking, you know, doing a 100% ban, staff following that meeting did look at some of the recommended changes, and the town attorney's been working with staff to draft those revisions and bring them back to council. Rebecca, I'm not sure on our current schedule. We're at, it would be potentially the first meeting or second meeting in February, first meeting in March, potentially. But we're happy to work with Camille or anyone from the group to make sure that they're aware when that comes back to council, but we're shooting for the second meeting in February, first meeting in March.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
And if I have Camille's email, I will follow up with with her to get an update about when we plan to schedule that for first reading.
Great. Okay, awesome. Thank you, guys. We do not have any other hands up right now for public open time, so we're going to go ahead and close public comment, and we are going to move on. Let's see, there are no presentations, which brings us to item four, our consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. Any member of the council can pull an item from the consent calendar, or any member of the public can pull an item from the consent calendar to discuss, or they can comment on the consent calendar overall. Would any members of the council or staff like to pull an item from our consent calendar? Seeing none, we're going to turn this over to members of the public. If any members of the public would like to pull an item from our consent calendar, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Give you guys a minute here in case anyone wants to raise their hand. And I'm not seeing any, so we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion and a possible motion on the consent calendar. Yeah, Bob?
Moving to approve items 4A through 4H.
Second.
Great, thank you. Could we vote, please, Rebecca?
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Hi.
Councilmember Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kunhardt?
Yes, thank you very much. That concludes our consent calendar. That brings us to item six, which is business items, as there are no public hearings. Our first business item is 6A, which is an audit report for the town of Cordera Madera, and then following that report, we're going to temporarily adjourn the town council meeting and move to the Sanitary District 2 meeting, so we can hear the audit report for SD2 and then allow our auditor to go home while we proceed with the rest of our meeting. So with that, let us start with the town's audit report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. You have before you the audit report. The unaudited actuels were presented in summary form back in September, and there haven't been any changes. So Ralph Marcello, the town's auditor, is here, and he will present. Thank you.
Mayor Beckman, and members of the town council. Thank you for the opportunity to perform your audit this year. We found your finance department very competent and cooperative in providing us the documents we examined for our audit procedures. And as everybody knows, this was a little bit more difficult this year than in previous years for obvious reasons. We found the records to be in very good condition. Last year, we explained, basically, because there were some new members on the council, what the basics of a certified public auditor. And this year, we completed our procedures without any findings or issues, and we're able to issue an independent audit report without qualifications or modifications, which is also known as a clean opinion. We also issued one of those for the sanitation district as well, which we'll talk about later. As we mentioned to management, and we sent you all a letter a month or so ago. It's known as the Statement on Auditing Standards, Letter Number 114. And we described any findings or issues we find during the course of our audit. And in the town of Cordera Madera, as in many small cities, there's generally a limited segregation of duties in the accounting department due to the small office staff. This is very common in small districts and cities. It's very hard to find a cost-effective method to reduce risk to an acceptable level, and those risk are the risk of material misstatement of the financial statements and also the misappropriation of assets. And that's, that's why it's very important for the council members and management to let employees know on a regular basis that misappropriation of assets will not be tolerated due to the ramifications of both employment termination and maybe additional ramifications in the legal atmosphere. Well, as we all know, the COVID virus has affected many California cities that depend upon tourism and sales tax for the general fund revenue. However, the city of Cordera Madera gets their primary general fund revenue from sales tax and property taxes. So looking into the future for fiscal year 2021, it's possible that sales taxes will be reduced from the prior year. However, property taxes shouldn't be affected very much because of the Proposition 13 allowable increase of property taxes of 2% a year. So, um, as far as the future, the wild cards that we see, we see them everywhere, are the employee pensions and medical retirement insurance or obligations, also known as the OPEC obligations. This year, the town's pension obligation increased by 1.3 million. And obviously, this was expected because of the discount rate adjustment by CalPERS. For those listening that are not sure what that means, the discount rate is very similar to investment rate of return. CalPERS determines how much money they'll need in the future to pay your retirements. They collect money from employees, and they invest about 2/3 of it. Well, they expect the investment rate on their assets in the future to be lower. I think it's going to be 7% soon, and it's going to go down eventually to 6.5%. What that means, if they're earning less money on their investments, that means the employer portion has to go up to meet the obligations. So you can expect increased pension expenses in the future. One thing the town did to mitigate this was to set up a, both a pension and an OPEC stabilization trust. And this can help with the volatility in future payments. And again, this is what some cities do when they have excess cash. They put the money in this pension OPEC trust. And when the future benefit payments or obligations and payments require more employer contributions, they can take the money out of the trust to meet their annual requirements. So that's a very good thing. As we look, as we look in some of the economic letters we get, it's hard to say what the future is going to hold, but we know that the state of California is is going to have a very big budget deficit this year to the tune of 50 to 60 million, a billion dollars. I mean, it wasn't that long ago. I remember their annual budget was 85, $90 million, and now it's close to 235 billion. So what the states always do when they have these budget deficits is they try to borrow money everywhere they can. And some of you might remember, a few years ago, they borrowed money through a triple flip, where they gave you the money that they were required and obligated to give you, such as your sales tax and vehicle license fee revenue. They give it to you, but then they borrowed it back, and then they paid it three years later. So these kind of games that the state does, there's no determination on what they're going to do next, but they're very desperate for funds. They did this with redevelopment agencies 35 years ago. They were practically begging and forcing cities to create a redevelopment agency so that the town and the cities would pay for redevelopment instead of the state. But then when they saw how much money they were losing, they reversed that and required the counties and cities to pay that money back. So you have some pretty good resources and reserves right now for that proverbial rainy day, which is going to be very soon for the state. On page 50 of your financial statement is the budget and actual comparison of the overall financial activity of the general fund, the main operating fund of the town. In spite of the pandemic, the general fund revenue came in at 1.4 over budget. Expenses came in at about $843,000 under budget. So overall, everything considered, the state did pretty well for the prior fiscal year. We'll discuss the Sanitary District next. Do you have any questions?
Great, thanks, Ralph. Were there any questions from the council for Mr. Marcello or staff? If not, we'll go ahead and open this up to public comment. If any member of the public would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. David, I see your hand will get to you as soon as we close public comment. Not seeing any hands go up. Rebecca, do we have any email public comments on this item?
I don't believe so, but I'm just refreshing one more time.
Great, thank you.
No email.
Great, then we will close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion and a motion. We'll start with David.
Ralph, one of the other things on our agenda tonight is approval or not of the ongoing investment policy, which we just did in our consent agenda. Of those reserves that you were able to look at and test, do you have any comments on the degree of safety, sound, liquidity, and yield of the various funds that we're holding in reserve? Any specific comment on those?
No, I don't. And unless you have some of the smartest people in the room in your council, most people just let Leif make those decisions.
Leif? I'm sorry, let?
Oh, the local agency investment fund?
Oh, yes. There, that's only a piece. That's only the cash, total little cash bucket compared to the other funds which are invested in other ways.
No, I don't have any comment on that right now. The only investment issue I see is if you're not getting a return equal to or greater than the interest rates on your mortgages or your debt, then you might consider whether it's prudent or not to pay off your shopping center or some of your other long-term investments.
All right, any other questions from council, or if not, we'll take a motion to accept this report? Fred?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion to accept the audited financials.
Second.
Thank you. Rebecca, can we vote, please?
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Charles, you're muted.
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kunhardt?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes, thank you. So now we're going to temporarily adjourn the town council meeting and reconvene in the Sanitary District 2 meeting, so that Ralph can give us his same comparable report for SD2. So we're going to adjourn the council meeting and convene the SD2 meeting. Rebecca, could we get a quick roll call, please?
Board member Casissa? Board member Lee?
Here.
Board member Avazia?
Here.
Board Vice President Kunhardt?
David appears to be here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Here, I'm sorry.
Board President Beckman?
Here, thank you. And if there's no objection, we will reorder the agenda and start with item 6A, which is the presentation of the annual independent audit report for SD2. No objections? Any objections? Not seeing any. So with that, Ralph to you, sir.
Well, the internal controls issue we discussed with the town previously, so I won't bring those up again. The district pretty much met its financial budgeted goals for last year, coming in just under $37,000 for revenue. However, expenses came in at 1.4 million over budget, because there was some very large maintenance repair work that had to be done, close to 800,000 or 900,000, if I recall. However, the operating budgets do not include the depreciation expense. So because of those unanticipated maintenance issues, the net income of 1.8 million was close to the budget estimate. Otherwise, the financial statements for the sanitary district came in very well and presented in accordance with GASB. That's pretty much for the sanitary sanitation district. Last year, I mentioned one of our clients down in Monterey County. This client's been around over 100 years, similar to your sanitation district. And they're fighting a coastal commission issue in regards to the, what they call the sea level rise. And the commission wants the Water District to move their plan inland, which is going to cost between 50 and 100 million dollars. Well, our client did some research and found out that the worst places on earth where the sea level is rising is India and Asia, but also New York City and Miami. Nothing on the West Coast. And they're rising at the rate of about six inches per century. So so that's something, when I looked at, when I inspected some of your pump stations, they were close to being, not underwater, but the high tide was coming in, the winds were coming in, and they were blowing water out into the street. So I'm sure you've addressed that many times. But anyway, I just thought I'd throw that in, so you know what some of the other districts are having to deal with. The only reason an auditor would bring this up is because when it comes to an issue of going concern, your ability to continue and operate, the issue of sea level comes up now. So of course, in 50 years, the next sanitation board of directors meeting will address this, I'm sure, on January 19th in 2070, so we won't have to worry about it right now. Anyway, that's it for sanitation district. Are there any questions?
Great, thank you, sir. Any questions from the board members for Ralph? If not, we'll open this up to public comment. Any member of the public who would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, did we get any email public comments on this?
No emails public comments were received.
Great, thank you. And I'm not seeing any hands up, so we are going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for discussion and a potential motion to accept the report. Fred?
Yeah, I just want to thank Daria and the financial team, because I apologize for not doing it under the town council meeting portion. But I think you guys did a great job with getting clean audits. There appears to be no control issues. So just congrats for a great job to you and your staff.
Thank you very much.
And with that, I'll go ahead, I'm sorry, David, go ahead. I was going to make a motion, go ahead.
Yeah. Ralph, I'm not going to disagree with you on the high marks that you're giving our financial group at all. I have to take exception to what you just said about sea level rise. The state of California is for about five years has carried the numbers, one to two inches of sea level rise per year, which is 10 to 20 inches per decade, not the six inches per decade that you mentioned. And it's a it's a bigger concern here in Cordera Madera than you might have reflected in your perhaps offhand comments. That's all. Not important to the central issue, which is approval of your review of our excellent work here by staff.
Thank you, David, and I'll second Fred's comment. His motion stands. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great, thank you, David. Rebecca, when you're ready, please.
Board member Casissa?
Yes.
Board member Lee?
Yes.
Board member Avazia?
Yes.
Board Vice President Kunhardt?
Yes.
President Beckman?
Yes, thank you very much. All right, and now we're going to adjourn the Sanitary District 2 meeting and come back to our town council meeting. And we are on item 6B, which is consideration and possible adoption of Resolution 2 2021, approving revisions to the 2020-2021 budget. And I believe there's a staff report.
Yes, thank you. This item is the budget revision. As you know, the budget was last revised for this year back in July. And there are three proposed funds, three funds that have proposed budget revisions as part of this budget revision. The Operating Fund, the Cordera Madera Local Sales Tax Fund, and the Park Madera Center Fund. So with regard to the first fund, the Operating Fund, there's no change as a result of this to the bottom line, to, there's no change to the ending fund balance. There are several reductions to revenue, mainly the hotel tax, the transient occupancy tax, which was originally decreased by 30% back in July as compared to the previous year, but I'm going to need to revise it down another almost 40% or $210,000 due to the fact that because of the coronavirus pandemic, tourism and travel, you know, has decreased greatly. Also, another decrease has to do with ambulance charges for some, they're down compared to the last two years. The budget was developed with those figures in mind, and based on the fees received to date, I'm anticipating a drop of about $170,000 to that. Also, interest earnings are very low right now, so I'm asking for a decrease of $20,000 for that. And then there is decreased revenue from the sanitary district due to the fact that last year there were some funds, about $136,000 that belonged to the sanitary district that was mistakenly posted to the town, and I didn't discover this until after the auditor had finished the sanitary district audit and, you know, was issuing the financial statements. So, you know, I called him immediately, and he said that it was not material, and I can make the adjustment this year. So that's what this is. Then there are some expenditures that are being revised, mainly increasing salaries by about $135,000 and benefits by about $38,000. increasing salaries by about a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars and benefits by about thirty eight thousand dollars. And this is this includes the the payments to staff or to department heads for one time leave buyouts that took place earlier in the fiscal year as approved by the council. It includes an approved promotion to a new position called code enforcements and communications manager and two part time code enforcement officers. And when we get to the sanitary, I mean, to the sales tax fund, there'll be a request to have the sales tax fund reimburse the general fund, the operating fund for these new positions. The landscaping budget was not sufficient, so there's a hundred thousand dollars in increase in there. Being requested. And then to offset all of this, sales tax revenue is being increased by nearly six hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars, which I think is very justified. The budget budgeted sales tax had been reduced by thirty percent back in July. However, the receipts that we've, you know, received through December, there's only been a three percent decrease, nowhere near thirty percent, and HDL, who is the town's consultant, our our budget is actually saying that it'll be significantly more than what I've budgeted. So I think that this is so far, this seems like it's it's justified in doing so. And so as a result of being able to do that, the operating fund won't have any impact. It's just moving these expenditures and revenues around. The Corder Madera Sales Tax Fund. There are a couple of items in there that are carryover from last year, the the capital projects for the Paradise Drive sidewalk and the two thousand nineteen pavement rehabilitation were budgeted last year, but some of the expenditures, nearly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars took place this year. So that's a carryover from unused funds. The capital planning for the potential town hall remodel last year, that whole project, there was five hundred thousand dollars budgeted, but I think about two hundred and sixty six thousand was spent. So there have been ongoing expenses related to capital planning. So as part of that unspent budget, that's what this is. Then there, the rest of the items, well, one is the reimbursement of the hundred thousand dollars for the code enforcement that I I just mentioned a moment ago. That's part of the disaster preparedness budget. And then the other items which have been approved by council in the past were the thirty two thousand five hundred dollars in gift card support to various businesses in town for the purpose of providing gift cards to community members who are in need as well as fifty thousand dollars transferred to the housing assistance fund because more was needed beyond the transfers that took place in the previous year. And then eighty seven hundred and sixty five dollars transferred to the business assistance fund. Since there were more applicants than anticipated. And the other, the last fund that has a revision is the Park Madara Center Fund. And I anticipate that rental revenue will be decreased by sixty eight thousand dollars, and that's due to vacancies and rent deferrals of the shopping center, again, due to the pandemic situation. So as I mentioned, there'll be no impact to the general fund operating budget. For Corder Madera Sales Tax, the the ending balance of the fund even after all of this will be five point six million dollars. That's if everything is spent this year, which it may not be maybe more, or it could be less if the revenue is is less. And that doesn't, that does include the emergency reserve of two point five million dollars. And Park Madara Center, of course, still has a negative balance, which will increase as a result of this revenue reduction to about two point one million dollars. Happy to answer.
Great, thank you, Daria. We will go to questions from the council for staff and we'll start with David.
Daria, thank you. Well done. Excuse me. If there's a surprise in all of what you've said, for me, it's the say, the unexpected recuperation of our sales tax revenue collection. And if you could please, do you have a way to segregate how much of that is sales tax paid by our local businesses and retailers and how much is paid in from the state share of let's say distant deliveries that are picking up in some ways for where local business is leaving on?
Okay, the the sales tax that I was talking about here is the one percent, not the, you know, the special quarter Madera sales tax. And after having a meeting with our sales tax consultants, HDL, the the reason that it seemed there were, there were two reasons that sales tax were strong so far this year. One had to do with auto sales here in town. So the town receives money on every automobile for this one percent sales tax, but doesn't necessarily receive the, you know, the special point seven five sales tax that has that's in a different fund and has to do with where the vehicle is registered. The auto sales were up and were strong. And then the other reason is a share of what is called the the state pool, the the state and county pool, which results mainly from online sales. So the larger the town share of other things are like such as auto sales or overall, the larger the share of your pool is, which sort of seems like counterintuitive, but it's benefiting Corder Madera in this case. So because when auto sales went up and helped our sales tax, the the pool went up as well. So those were the two strongest segments according to HDL. Other other segments were were down, of course, you know, restaurants and and department stores and things like that. But and but this is only, you know, of course, a part of the year. We don't know what's going to happen in the rest of the year.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Daria? Yeah, Fred?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, because I know some of it may just be buried in some of these funds. Do you know how much total dollars we've provided financial support related to COVID? You know, between, I know gift cards, we did programs for small businesses, small program for renters. I'm just trying to get an idea of the total.
Yes, I have it. Here, I know that it was thirty two thousand dollars for gift cards. Let me, I can look this up quickly for you.
Okay, again, I'm just trying to get an idea of the total amount because.
It's about three hundred thousand.
Okay.
That's the approximate amount, yes.
Residential support for for rental assistance, the hundred thousand that the council just approved, thirty five thousand has been spent so far on the gift cards, but we still have another sixty five thousand available to assist. And then the first round of support to the businesses was approximately a hundred thousand as well.
Yeah, I just think it's great that we have a healthy budget, healthy financials. And, you know, with all this downturn, but we're able still to provide financial support to the town, businesses and residents. I just think it's great. Great job.
Great, thank you, Fred. Any other questions for staff before we open up to the comment? Yeah, Charles?
My only question is, is, you know, I hear that there'll be more support for local government and future legislation at the federal level. Ultimately, do we anticipate that that will affect our budget and our ability to get reimbursed or basically get help for do we anticipate what that might be? Or is that already baked into the budget?
Additional money? No, is not included. The town did receive a hundred and twenty four thousand dollars from what they called the CARES Act, and that's already included. When I submitted the the information to the CARES Act, the the town had was able to provide documentation that they've actually spent when you include outstaffed time and things like that, over two million dollars. So I don't think we'll get two million dollars, but we may get some additional. I don't know the amount. Additionally, there's a FEMA claim pending, which I don't really expect to get much from. I had submitted over a hundred thousand dollars and most of it just wasn't wasn't eligible. The the only things that they're really reimbursing are like our programs, you know, for, you know, not not just staff's time or something like that, but programs like did the town distribute food or something like that? So and but they they won't reimburse, I asked them if they could reimburse for, you know, the support, the business support and the rental support. And they said, no, they said, because payments to individuals and private businesses were not eligible. So no, I don't know how much more we will.
So out of that two million, did they reject the rest of the two million that you or is that still under review and that could be that they ultimately can find support?
They didn't reject it. There was a formula and and the town could only get up to an amount, you know, a certain amount, which happened to be a hundred and twenty four thousand dollars, which they did, I think, based on, you know, population. So, no, I I don't know that they actually rejected anything. But it's just that under that plan, that was all we were going to get. But I I submitted everything anyway, just in case, you know, there's more or they want to know or anything like.
Excellent, thank you.
Awesome. Good question, Charles, and thank you, Daria. That was enlightening. Any other questions for staff before we open this up to public comment? If not, then we're going to turn this over to the public. Anybody who would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, do we get any email public comments on this?
No emails public comments were received.
Great, thank you. And I'm not seeing any hands up. So we're going to close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion and a possible motion on this resolution. Bob, excuse me.
I'll move to approve resolution number twenty seven slash twenty twenty.
Thank you. Is there a second? Fred?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and second it.
Excellent, thank you. Could we vote please, Rebecca?
Wait, 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 is that twenty twenty or twenty twenty one?
Oh.
It is. Well, it's a midyear.
Twenty twenty.
Yeah, it's a midyear. So I think it says of the end of the of the year. So you're, you're right. You're right.
All right, so um, the, okay, so the motion is for resolution number oh two twenty twenty one, as it appears in the agenda. Correct and on the resolution itself. Excellent. Rebecca, can we vote please?
Okay, so it's oh two twenty twenty one, correct?
Oh, okay.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kunhardt?
Yes, with a comment of thanks of keeping it in balance, Daria.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes, thank you very much.
Can I ask, where was the typo so I make sure that it doesn't get into?
It wasn't a typo. I just misread.
Okay.
Great. Awesome. Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Daria, for for your and your staff's great work there. That brings us to item six C, which is the big discussion of the evening. This is a preliminary discussion and possible direction to the town manager on how best to proceed with town hall facility and operations. We're going to be looking at three main options. One is renovation in addition on the existing town hall facility. Two is purchasing an office building and and moving town hall there. And three is leasing office space with with a potential lease to buy scenario. And with that, Todd, I believe it's you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. There's a lot here, and so I apologize for all this information in one report, but really trying to set the stage for the conversation moving forward. Not asking for an approval of any one option tonight, but some direction. One of the most helpful things you could give staff would be to potentially eliminate one of these options and really narrow down the scope. Or of course, if we've missed something, to really provide that direction to us as well. And I also want to emphasize a couple of things at a high level. This is a high level conversation. I'm not going to go through all the background of how we got here. That's in the report. You've lived it since twenty eighteen or since you've been on this council. So I'll save you from that, but really, we've been focused on solving issues for the next fifty fifty to a hundred years, everything that we do, you know, developing the fifteen year plan and then fifteen years out from that, you know, building the funding streams, developing the capital improvement projects, solving the unfunded liabilities, really taking these pieces on fifteen year increments and attacking it. And so tonight I want to try to develop that conversation and a visual for you to think about as you move forward. The town hall project, as discussed back in twenty eighteen, it's deteriorating. The building doesn't currently serve the needs of staff or this community. It's falling apart, quite frankly. I outlined some of that, you know, back in twenty eighteen and again in this report and its present term. And so back in eighteen, when we had this conversation with council, there's actually a link that is really outstanding that really talks about the initial presentations in twenty eighteen to present, all the way to the planning commission back in October, actually recommending this, this, this project go to council for review. And so we're prepared to bring it to you. But before we do that, we really wanted to step back for a second and talk about other options. And really, one of the nuances that staff has been faced with is really related to COVID nineteen. You know, as you know, COVID nineteen, the pandemic, it shut downtown hall back in mid March. And the main building has been forced to be closed since. Before that, we were faced with a number of issues from the fires, the smoke intrusion into our building, the lack of ventilation and a quality HVAC system. You know, not having good insulation in our windows and our doors, the condition of the building overall. We were really forced to to consider closing the offices back in the in the peak of the fire season, which is, it was really new to us back in twenty nineteen. In late twenty nineteen, we actually had the upstairs utility room overflowed with sewage and backflow and actually went into our walls in the ceiling from upstairs to downstairs. And we had to remediate and close the offices, but it got into our electrical system. It's in our walls. It caused a lot of havoc for us in late twenty nineteen. Recently, in the in the first round of of the storms during our 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 holiday break, we actually had a direct leak from the roof into the upstairs area. And it's currently leaking now, and we're doing our best to 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 solve that problem. But it appears we may have some mold intrusion in there and as well as, you know, from our prior remodel project back in twenty sixteen, we know that we have asbestos in the tiles. And so we're faced with, you know, a project. And as I start to give these examples, they they're starting to become more and more often. These are twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollar fixes each time. And the building's falling apart. What I'll tell you is the downstairs, I consider very, very close to being condemned. That's where I'll put it. And it's not me over, you know, taking advantage of this conversation in the moment. It's a fact. And, you know, anyone that wants to go down there and have a a tour, you know, a visual is worth a thousand words. And so I can't, that'll do it justice. It's just, it's not okay. Upstairs, you know, we can patch it and we can continue to move on for a period of time. But again, we're faced again with a with a pretty large expense just to have staff work in that upstairs area. And so with it, it really brought another discussion for staff to counsel to consider of like, look, if we're going to open as we come out of COVID, what is the use of the current building going to be if we have to update the upstairs to make it usable? But then downstairs, we're going to have to move staff. We already have the entire public works engineering team and a double wide trailer out in the parking lot. How do we reopen? And as I step back and look at it, you know, as your town manager, I'm recommending, we need to make, we need to kind of know which way we're going to go. And so I focus first on an option and we'll get to it. I'm just a high level summary right now of like, what are options? Can we, can we put a series of trailers out in Pixley or Town Park and and work out of the trailers? And what's the expense there? And, you know, long term solution of taxpayer money, or can we lease space? You know, there's a lot of, and and in here at any one option, this is a high level. Within any one option, we can really dig down deep and and come back to you with a whole bunch of analysis and options. But we started to look at leases of like the top six areas in town that might be able to facilitate a community room, a chamber for our council and and commissions and boards and for staff. You know, we were really looking at, you know, eight, eight thousand square feet plus. If you start to look at what the leases are, the average lease in our area will range in that square footage from anywhere from four hundred thousand up to six hundred thousand annually. Again, we think there's some offers, you know, some opportunities to be had in the in the four hundreds range. But again, that's what we're talking about. And so I stepped back and I looked at that number. And then I focused back on what we've really worked on over the last eighteen months, this remodel construction project. And we looked at, okay, if we're going to spend, you know, let's just say the low side, four hundred thousand annually on a on a lease, let's see if we can do the same on a debt payment alone. And and what would that look like? And so alone. And what would that look like? And so what I'll, what I'll go over with you in a little bit is what that looks like, but really trying to mirror, you know, some debt service up to 10 or 15 years at a certain interest rate, kind of mirroring what, what a lease would cost us if we were to lease property. Another option that we really looked at, what's out there? You know, is there an opportunity to buy office space, bring in some revenue, but also, you know, take over the other side of that office space and move our staff and town hall operation there? And we gave the Hunt Plaza as an example. There are others in town as well that we want to talk about. But when you looked at the op, option to lease, again, it was 400 to 600,000 annually. If you looked at purchasing something or building our current project that we've been discussing since, for the last 18 months, you're really looking at a, at a purchase or a construction cost of anywhere from seven and nine million dollars. And so I was able to kind of give you high level discussion over what that would look like to really evaluate, you know, big picture. The other piece that's really critical to this council, and you've asked for it, and we're, this is the first of many documents, you'll start to see overlays to it. But it's on the capital improvement infrastructure side. How much revenue on an annual basis and over the next 15 years do we anticipate to bring in? And what are those revenue streams related to infrastructure? And so attachment six, we're going to spend some time there because you'll see it's anywhere from 153 million up to 165, 170 million. And so as we start to make decisions with the facility, our streets, adaptation, you can start to make big picture multimillion dollar decisions on a 15-year plan, understanding how that influences your decisions, big picture. What you'll see is when we get to attachment six, one of the key pieces is timing. When you talk about facilities, infrastructure and adaptation. And the time now, as we start to work through the analysis of adaptation, as, as we start to, you know, on an annual basis, really attack the fire mitigation side at a million dollars plus a year, as we start to attack our streets and roads at 1.5 to 2 million dollars a year, you can see that there's an opportunity of a potential debt service of 15 years, doing it now, putting a down payment down, and either thinking about purchasing something or doing the construction project now. As you get to years five, seven, eight, it starts to be a much more difficult conversation for us. And it's one that I, I just want to caution the council and really for our discussion, we should really talk about that, you know, in this meeting and moving forward. Timing's important. You know, it's easy, you know, this, this project is not a sexy one. None of us enjoy talking about it. If I could, I would prolong it for five years. But if I did, we're going to be in worse shape five years from now. And we're going to throw away a million, multimillions of dollars of taxpayer money by doing it. And so this, this staff report tries to frame that conversation. Again, I'm not going to go through the summary background of how we got here. We've really been focused on, look, anything that we do moving forward, it's always been your town manager and staff's intent to solve the problem and not talk about it again, because we got so many issues moving forward. And so that's been our intent, but we may, council may feel different at this point. And I just want to make sure that I am not getting in front of you, and I am following your direction moving forward. Again, we're asking for feedback. Hopefully, we can eliminate one of these options, narrow it down. Give me any feedback of additional information you need, and I'll provide that at an upcoming meeting. And so with that, I'm going to share my screen. Yes.
A little bit of a predecessor question, Todd. You, you were very vivid in your description of the shortcomings of the existing 90-year-old town hall and, and, you know, 55 years of renovations there. But I was expecting you to say something about whether that means we have to completely rethink the program and/or budget for the existing town hall renovation and expansion. Do you feel that our previous assumptions, let's say, through, through last summer's work on the existing town hall renovation, are adequately budgeted, given the additional things that have cropped up since?
I do. I think the process was solid, from my opinion, and the feedback that drew us here. You know, staff started at a much smaller scope project, being basically was, it was based on what is the minimum we can do to be successful at the lowest possible cost? That, that's how we started this. And as we started to engage the council, the community, the workshop, the working group, and all of our work with the planning commission, it really got us to this, this project now. And what it helped us do too is, you know, this started at a $3 million project. And really, at times, we were like, it's approaching 10 million. And right now, what you'll see is this is an 8.3 million dollar project. If we were to go to, you know, net carbon zero, if we're going to, you know, the, the highest quality possible, you know, you're looking at a half a million dollar ad with some design ads that, that really make this an 8.3 to 9 million dollar con, conversation. Fiscally, I believe, based on where we're at, we can do it. We can do it without the expense of any other projects or any promises to the community. And we can do it without putting us in a poor fiscal position of lessons learned in the past. And the other one is that really, in discussions moving forward, and we'll continue to do that as this, if it does move forward to the council, is how does COVID and working from home impacted the scale of it? And what you'll find is the scale of the building was never extravagant office space. You know, it has the ability for us to grow a little bit, but there's some flexibility there. And I would see some possible conversations with council moving forward, if it comes before you, to talk about that. But this project and, and the process to get there, from my perspective of just evaluating ourselves and local government in general, the process was solid. And I think this project, as recommended by the planning commission, is set to come to council, and I support that coming to you. But I want to have this conversation first, if I answered your question.
So, so you're saying that we, we have adequately budgeted for the problems with roof, problems with ceiling tile, problems with moisture, problems with various degradations that have occurred and, and accelerated. We have adequately budgeted those in the town hall renovation program. Is that what you're saying?
I could answer that much easier for you. Yes, yes. We were going to do a pretty extensive remodel and rebuild that. Yes.
Okay. And, and I guess the other thing, as I was looking through all of the options, do any of the others have an appropriate and adequate volume of space for large meetings of town council or bicycle pedestrian or advisory committee or anybody, and adequate parking and public access for those meetings? I, I'm not seeing those, perhaps we're assuming renovations in, in some of those other projects.
I think that's the, that's the conversation to be had. For instance, if you talk about option two, and you look at, you know, the 101 Nolan, or you look at Hunt Plaza, you're looking at a, at a purchase price, you know, anywhere from seven and a half to eight and a half million, you're probably looking at Hunt Plaza, you know, to make it to be able to have the proper meeting space, to make the offices work, to make it ADA accessible, you're going to have to add an elevator, you're looking at a million, potentially more of renovations to the Hunt Plaza site. But yes, it's, it's one that could meet the checkboxes, but there's work to be done. The 101 Nolan, you know, again, we need to spend a little bit more time and analysis there. I think the upfront cost would be more expensive, but the maintenance and renovations would be much lower.
Okay.
But both would be within the range of the construction.
Okay. And last predecessor question. Given what we know about the condition of the existing building, is it occupiable anytime, let's say by the end of this year? Or would we have to really accelerate and, and find an off-site solution for office space anyway?
Yeah. So originally, the scale of the project, one of the things we really looked at of controlling cost was to keep staff on site during construction. And so staff was going to work in the current building while they built the addition next door. And then once the building next door was, the addition was built, we were going to move in, and then they were going to complete the renovation to the other side.
Is that feasible? Is that feasible now?
So what's going to change is probably the recommendation, if you do an, an analysis, would be, let's fix the, the leak upstairs. Let's keep staff upstairs. Let's keep staff in the trailer. And we're going to have to move downstairs, the, the staff downstairs somewhere. So we're probably going to have to add a trailer. And it's going to be, it's going to, it'll be difficult for staff for a period of time. But I think for staff, from a morale standpoint, you know, because those are tough conditions, would be knowing that the building is being constructed, and there is a, a light at the end of the tunnel. And so that would probably, we'll have to come back to you and do that analysis, but that's probably what I'd recommend. Or we can consider a short-term lease. That's a little bit more difficult, a little bit more expensive. I would probably recommend to keep, to help the community, to keep staff is on site the best we could. And so we'd probably look at that space, the cutout on the, on the east side of the firehouse on Pixley, the little cutout where you have the parking spaces, we'd probably look at putting a trailer there in the building and planning team there. So they're on site, they're all close together. So it's one-stop shopping still for citizens that come to see us. And we could do that with the construction. And that would be my recommendation. We'd probably, it would be the most efficient and cost savings.
Great. Okay. Thank you, David. Todd, you have more to report, right?
Yeah. So I'm going to, we kind of went into it. It's, I guess, I, for council, again, any questions on the background of how we got here today that I can answer? And I'm happy to move on to the next piece.
Okay. Any questions on background? All right. Why don't you go ahead, Todd?
Okay. Thank you. So again, what we're, what we're looking at here is, from staff's perspective, you have option one, it's the proposed town hall addition and remodel project. The vice mayor asked the really key questions, because again, we're in a different situation of the condition, the deteriorating condition of the building. If we were to move forward with this project, again, we think we have some thought and recommendations of how to keep staff still on site to make it work. But again, we're, we're under a time constraint. You can see the, on page five is, at the top of the page is option one, it's the proposed town hall addition and remodel project. And it gives an overview of what that is. Again, we've been, this has been a project that has really evolved since late 2018 with feedback of the planning commission, staff, the community, and the council. And it's one that we do support and we're proud of how we got here. Again, it's currently estimated at 8.3 million. There are, if, if this project were to come back to council at your request, you would see a series of options that could potentially take it to the 9 million, 9 million range. And that's based on, you know, energy efficiency additions and a few recommendations on the aesthetics and design. Option two, again, I gave you a couple of examples. These are not the only examples. The first is 240 Tamil Plaza Boulevard. This one is Hunt Plaza. It's 23,000 square feet. It's two stories. If you think about it, there's a north and south section. And so right now, the south section of Hunt Plaza, a majority of it is being leased out. It brings in approximate annual revenue of about $528,000 a year. Right now, the current owner estimates the overhead maintenance and taxes to be approximately 375,000 annually. And the approximate upfront renovations, and again, it depends on a series of, of analysis and decision-making. But if we use the upstairs piece of this site, we would have to have an elevator. And so that would really control our cost. But it could be anywhere from 300, really up to a million dollars in, in potential maintenance costs upfront. You know what? I'm happy. Would it be easier, council, if I go through here, if I share my screen?
Sure.
Okay. Can everybody see that? Okay. Okay. The estimated purchase price, and again, there's a, there's a strategy to this, but realistically, you know, staff wouldn't recommend a purchase of this building. We see it in the seven to eight million dollar range. And again, we take into consideration, that's because that's the upfront, you know, maintenance and some of the additions we would, renovations we would have to make. We would not recommend the purchase of, of this specific property with the renovations that would, that would take us over a nine million dollar cost. You know, again, we're, we're using the current remodel and construction project as the basis for any recommendations as we evaluate sites. The second one's 101 Nolan. This one's an interesting site. The pros to it, it has the possible, it has the potential square footage. The renovations would be limited. They have a large meeting room. This is a building, it has some unique corners to it, angles to it, that makes it a little bit unique. So we'd have to analyze it. But it has enough street parking. It would meet our needs. Again, the cost for this, staff is estimating in the seven and a half to eight and a half million dollar range with low, low upfront cost. There would be no revenue for this one. We would take this building over and use it 100% for staff and, and council and the community. The negative to this is it borders county jurisdiction there. And lucky, as you know, that is a flood zone. We would not have total, as RJ would tell us, we don't have total control of future decision-making, adaptation and making those decisions. So there is a risk to the site, and that we'd have to really analyze that and come back to council. So again, these two sites are just high-level examples of, there are opportunities out there in giving you an, an idea of what any renovations and purchased pricing would be comparatively to our option one. The other ones.
That one is available for lease, not just for sale, but for lease as well?
It is for both. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The lease on this is a little bit more expensive. Yeah, it would be in the, I believe, in the 500 to 550 range annually. Some other properties that continue to open up, originally, when you saw one of my attachments, there was an analysis back in late October, we had Keegan and Copan run another market analysis right before I wrote the staff report. And so there were some updated properties that opened up. There's one on 45 San Clemente. It's a large site. It's a lower, it's a lower price. But staff has not actually reviewed the inside. Again, it's, it's, there's some work to be done in analysis, but properties are opening up. It's a sign of the times with COVID-19. You have another one that's about to open on the market. Again, this is the one that Scandinavian Designs purchased. They're in the process of putting it back on the, on the market. The sale price is pending. It's probably going to be in the 9 million range. But again, this is the old theater building. That's a big site. There's potential options there for this, for the town to possibly consider a purchase and a whole bunch of options for development there, as well as town hall operations. All of these, and option two are attached, are part of attachment three for any further information. The other one is option, option three. Again, this is where I really started my evaluation when I was thinking about the staff report over the last two months, is really, what are our options? Like, I think I'm going to have to come back to council, and I'm going to have to recommend that we move out and lease space. And we still might have to do that if council wishes us to move forward. And so are there any spots out there? What are the potential costs? What you'll see is, the average lease cost is about $55 a square foot. Hunt Plaza was one of them. They're currently in bankruptcy proceedings. They're not, they're not considering leases at this time, but I still listed it just as an example of, of what is out there as a comparison and pricing. 770 Tamil Pious, as you know, that's owned by Coeur d'Alene Town Center. They have a, a lot of space, just under 20,000 square feet available. It's $69 a square foot. 50 Madeira Boulevard, that's the old Ameritrade building. That is one that has a lot of interest of staff and potential. Again, that is owned by the shopping center as well. And as you'll see, the, it's the highest rent in town. You were looking at, we, we'd spend a half a million plus leasing a property like that. And then again, you have some of the others, 101 Nolan, as the vice mayor mentioned, 200 Tamil Plaza is a potential one. And 601 Tamil Pious Drive, that's the old Daphne's building. That's right down the street from us on Tamil Pious. So there are potentials. There are more. If council wanted us to really evaluate leases, staff feels like we could find many options. And I think we could probably find something in the low 400s, 400,000 annually, if, if council wants to consider that. And, and back to anything that we do, if there was a short-term decision, and I mean 18 months or less, I think staff would recommend to council, the really control cost would be, let's do trailers. Let's do trailers, keep them on site. That doesn't interfere with construction. And, and consider that instead of leasing, because as you can see, you know, it's going to, we're going to be, it's going to be hard to find a short-term lease. We're going to pay a lot of money doing that. And I feel like considering trailers would be a third of the cost of leasing office space for a short 18 months or less period of time. Moving forward, and it's, it's in your attachment, it's attachment, attachment one. This is a, a chart from it. We really focused again on, on looking at leasing. What, what is the range? Again, it's 400 to 550,000, 600,000. This is a chart from it. We really focused again on on looking at leasing, what what is the range? Again, it's four hundred to five hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred thousand. Okay, what would a purchase of a property or our construction project look like? And so what we're looking at, what we've been considering as staff as a recommendation, you have two, but we have two million dollars in unrestricted funds available in the general fund. This is the two million is part of that three million surplus we had two fiscal cycles ago with the increase in sales tax. We took a million of that surplus and we put it towards our pension trust and we've left the two million in the in the general fund really to just ju- just to see how the how the market's going, how the economy is working and to come back to council at a later date with a recommendation. And so here we are. There's still two million dollars sitting there for us to really decide what to do with it. And so one possibility would be to use that. And then you use an additional two million dollars from the sales tax measure F, and I'll talk about why and where that money is available within that measure, both short term and long term. And really looking at, and if you think about that, it's a four million dollar down payment on a purchase up to nine million dollars. And you can see on on what the annual debt service would be. We're recommending potentially a consideration of a fifteen year finance package. It can be paid off at any time. But again, with the interest rates where they are, they're in the high twos, low threes. You can see what what that would be. And so a nine million dollar purchased. The second column here, again, it says it's measure F in general funds, it would be a four million dollar down payment in all scenarios. And then we could borrow from two million up to five. And if you follow it over, you can follow in the bold, potentially how that impacts our annual debt payments. And so this is one option to consider. Staff was actually positioned pre-COVID to recommend just buying, just paying for over two and a half fiscal cycles for the construction of of the new building. But further analysis, I think this is the safest option for us that that does not impact any future projects. Again, I'll talk about that in a second. It really seems to be the most fiscally prudent decision recommendation right now for you to consider with any financing. So with that, I would be remiss in the fiscal impact. If I didn't talk about COVID nineteen, you know, this is a tough one. And so for me to say, hey, it hasn't impacted us. Well, it absolutely hasn't impacted us and we'll talk about that. But again, I think it's important to go back in time and to think about the decisions that since your staff has been with you since twenty sixteen to present with this council and past councils in that time has been fiscal prudence, decision making and setting our priorities to make sure we're sustainable moving forward. And so really, what that means to your staff since twenty sixteen was bringing in our finance director in twenty seventeen, Daria Carrillo. And it was really to set the stage for that first analysis and then the decision making through our finance committee, ad hocs, subcommittee in the council to really position us to make these long term decisions and and analysis. And with that, I believe that we're positioned at better than any time that I can remember and really going back and looking at the history of the town of Corder Madera. Again, we've talked about it many times. Back in twenty twelve, we were probably fiscally in our worst situation. We had enjoyed over decades of surpluses. And then just a series of things happened with the economy. Sales tax eroded, we purchased, and it's a lesson learned for us to discuss tonight, if if you wish. The shopping center, it was just the perfect storm for us where we had within our general fund, a deficit of four hundred thousand, we had zero reserves. And we had four million dollars in our sanitary district and we had about eight hundred and fifty three thousand dollars available for capital improvement projects. That's what we had, the town of Corder Madera. And that's what people remember and they should. And so the conversation for hiring staff, for setting the analysis, our decision making and all of our hard work over the last four years has positioned us for this conversation. And so I'm not here to jump on the table and say, hey, we're fine and we're going to be great. We have a plan is the most important thing. And if we follow our plan, COVID nineteen does not change our decision making related to town hall operations. And so let's talk about it. And so COVID nineteen impact since March of twenty thirteen, so that's last fiscal year and the current fiscal year up to what you just heard from Daria on the last last item. We've taken a three point three million dollar revenue hit to the town of Corder Madera and they're here in nineteen twenty. It was the one percent sales tax revenue loss. It was just under five hundred thousand dollars. The measure of sales tax revenue losses, which is it supports our capital improvement projects, took a pretty large hit of seven hundred and fifty thousand in transient occupancy taxes to just under a three hundred thousand dollar hit. Now, keep in mind, when we look at this, we anticipated those losses to be twenty five to thirty percent, right? And then that started his job, be ultra conservative. We anticipated the worst. And really what happened is we lot, we saw those losses, but we also had other revenue, one time revenues that came in that really controlled our budget and we were able to balance ultimately balance that budget. And so just because you see these losses here, we didn't have a deficit last last fiscal year budget, we're able to balance it. You know, the only reason why I chose a negative number is because we took that one million from the general fund and we put it into our pension trust. We didn't spend it. You know, and keep in mind, you know, that pension trust just was is currently at about three point six million. It'll be at four million dollars at the end of this fiscal year. And so we reinvested that. So we weren't working in a debt. We didn't, we we control costs. We had a plan. You know, the council had a plan and that's, I just want to point that out. So when you see that three point three million dollar loss over eighteen month or over this period of time, and people say, how could you even think about spending money? It's our plan. We have a fifteen year plan and it's important to to note. And so for twenty twenty one, current fiscal year, these are our anticipated losses. What you'll see is I have a different projection than than Daria and it's a more, Daria has a more conservative budget estimate and and that's what we pay her for and that's what we expect. But what I'll tell you is that what you're going to see and we're seeing in real time of receipts and what is happening, our auto sales and our top twenty five sales tax earners are carrying the day. You know, so if you think about our twenty five, our top twenty five sales tax earners, they are over seventy five percent of our revenue related to sales tax. Our sales tax is anywhere from ten to eleven million dollars annually. Third over seventy five percent of that. Our restaurants, our small business owners are taking large hits and that's where we need to focus on helping them get through this because they're struggling. We need to help them and we're trying our best. But when you look at the town's overall revenue, that's who is carrying the day for us. The other thing, as Daria mentioned, there were two things, the Wayfair decision on online sales with Amazon of really for them to log the sales tax for California the right way. We saw a huge increase that we've never had before. And so that's huge. It was, it was hundreds of thousands of dollars in revenue, more than we've never had before that we're seeing now. So that helped offset this loss. And the other one is the county polls. The county polls are way up and and they're way up positively, which has a positive impact for us, but also our our regional centers. The sales receipts are also part of the county formula and we are outperforming others. And so we also get a bigger percentage of the bucket of the county poll. So when you step back and look at all those things, we're going to be able to, based on our projections, you know, balance our budget, not use any of our reserves, not eliminate any services, not, we're not freezing any positions. And quite frankly, we're not even close to considering that. Now, I'm not saying that to say we're fine. We just have a plan. It's within our plan, our redundancies in the system. And so that's the positives there. And I also want to, I give the twenty twelve example of what we had. And so in twenty twelve, the general fund was negative four hundred thousand. Today, it's two point seven million. This two point seven million, if you keep in mind going back to fiscal years to where we are right now, it's grown by a hundred thousand dollars. You know, if you take away the one million dollar payment that we put into our pension trust, it's actually increased expenditures to revenues. We're okay. And that's the key number that I look at cash in the bank. How are we doing? And so we are trending just as we are anticipating as our, as our analysis has shown us, we're trending positively. The other thing that we have is a ten percent restricted reserve fund. It's two million dollars. We have an emergency reserve fund. It's two point five million dollars. That was two point five million dollars set aside by the council in the event of major emergencies, earthquakes, natural disasters, pandemics, right? So that's set aside to assist us. The sanitary district now has a two point five million dollar reserve. We've never had a reserve before in the sanitary district. We have six million dollars available in the sanitary district capital improvement projects fund. We have four million dollars in the pension trust that has been built over the last three to four fiscal years. If you talk to any of your cohorts, both on councils and managers and finance directors in the state of California, many of them will say, well, pension trusts are only as good as money that you have at the end of the year. And my point is when you have a plan and you execute it, are one of the things that has really made us successful is the, and and we don't give enough credit to it, is the ability to think outside the box, both with our business community, our general managers and the owners of those shopping centers and our commercial businesses of economic development, finding a way to say yes, that fits our model within our town, that sets us up for success. You know, those dealerships have really carried the day, but they take up space. They're kind of an eyesore. We don't want to see cars out there a lot. What you're seeing now with with the climate change discussions, you're seeing the electric vehicles really take off and Tesla was the leader. You're now seeing Polestar just came into the the shopping center and two additional electric dealers are looking at moving into the shopping center. And so, you know, those are storefronts. But the same models Tesla that have huge economic ramifications for us in a positive way, both from an economic standpoint, but also making us a regional powerhouse as we talk about potentially moving to electric, you know, following the governor's, you know, executive order by twenty thirty five, really eliminating, you know, the the discussion of gas powered vehicles potentially. So we are not, we're moving forward with the decision making matrix of our leaders in the state, you know, five, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now. We're not falling behind and being reactive. That has set us up when you look at revenues to expenditures of a surplus annually in the good times. As an example, it was three million dollars, we had a three million dollar surplus just eighteen months ago. And then you just saw a huge reduction of two point five plus million dollars to this current budget without asking for any eliminating any services, positions or any of our projects. That's, that's, that is a huge kudo to Adam Wolf and the planning team to our planning commission. It's just when you step back and think about like this report and the analysis, it's like people ask why, that's why. We have a plan and we have an amazing team of commissioners, council members and staff really doing the work. Retiree Health Trust, again, it's at three point five million. So think about that. We have two trust funds to deal with to to really position us with retiree health benefits over the next. You know, this is paid out over the next fifty to seventy five years for both pension and retiree health. These, it was funny, you asked the question, Mr. Vice Mayor, to to our accountant, our auditor on our, how we invest. And he he gave the life response. These two funds were also open for a reason. They actually allow us to 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 strategize and actually invest money above the interest rate for life. And our finance subcommittee was led by James Andrews, our previous mayor and council member and Carl Spursum and Larry Reed and Annette De Sano and the team. They recommend to council how we should how we should invest our funds in these two funds. And we we took a conservative approach, but again, we're seeing five, six, seven percent rates of return instead of the one or two percent with life. And so this is a secondary reserve for us at a higher interest rate, but we control how we invest it. We control our funds. And so that is a huge, you know, huge addition to the town and benefit to us. Lastly, restricted capital improvement project funds. We have approximately one point eight million at the end of the fiscal year projected. That's our sales tax, TAM monies, grants and things like that. And again, our sales tax measure fund is is estimated to be around five point four million. I use that number, it's slightly different than Daria's because I've been, I've been tracking with our public works director, RJ Suco on where I think we're going to, you know, expend our sales tax funds by the end of the fiscal year. And so there'll be a little bit of carryover moving forward. Most importantly, in a situation like this, how much cash do we have on hand? We have thirty point four million. If you compare us per capita for by all of our cohorts in the state of California, I will tell you that the town of Corder Madera is one of the most fiscally least sustainable towns and cities in the state of California, put us up against anyone. And so it's it's impressive. And then lastly, because I think it's important because you're making not tonight, but in the future, you're making a big picture decision. It's the fifteen year revenues and capital infrastructure improvement projects. So it's approximately one hundred and fifty three, just one hundred and sixty three million. I just want to cover it really quick. And then I'm going to stop. It's page seventy two of your of your, of your packet. And so really what you're going to see here, we're going to start to develop this. This is going to go to the the sales tax oversight committee. It's going to go to our finance subcommittee. This is the next task we're going to give them. And staff is, we're going to start here. First, we're going to start with our revenues. Everything we do, we want to look at fifteen years. And then we'll work our way back and then you'll have overlays. And so for any year, short term, long term, you'll have facilities, you'll have adaptation, you'll have streets and roads. Anything that has to do with capital improvement projects, we're going to, you'll have this as a living document. And so as we move forward, you can see timing. You can make timing decisions. You can make short term and long term decisions to our funds. And I think council, you need this, right? You're going to be making multi million dollar decisions. This is a living document. It's kind, I think I've told a couple council members over the past, I I look at this kind of like the Gov Invest software. If you give Todd Cusomano a three percent raise, how does it impact us thirty years from now in unfunded liability? You need that, right? You need to make that. So if we're going to approve a project, is that at the expense of any other projects? How does that impact us? And so quickly, I just want to explain revenue streams. The quarter of our sales tax fund, we're estimating that it'll be approximately seven point nine million at the end of the fiscal year. So that's July first of this year. If you move out a part of this, two point five million of that is the emergency reserve. So you'd have to back that out. So we have about five million dollars. You can see the anticipated revenues moving forward as you go out. It's on average, I would just say, you know, it's about four million and it raises as you move forward. But you can see, we're really anticipating, it appears twenty two, twenty three will be our recovery. We'll be back to where we were with an economic downturn over the next eighteen months. By about twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, you'll start to see our revenues come back to normal as it relates to measure F. That's what we're anticipating at this point. But you can see if you scroll all the way down by twenty thirty five, we anticipate about a seventy two million dollar revenue stream. So when we talk about the facility, my recommendation upfront would be to use two million dollars of the sales tax measure funds on one of these given years in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. And then two million dollars from the general fund is a down payment. And then as we map out, you'll see an overlay that would basically back out, let's just say, four hundred thousand in debt payment till twenty thirty five. And so you could see that, how that impacts your decision making moving forward. And again, you'll have then overlays of all the other capital improvement projects currently on our five year plan. And you'll start to be able to see how that impacts a big picture. As you move down, again, street impact fees, we left these a little bit flat because you really don't have, you don't, you don't necessarily know what they're going to be. And so we took averages. The gas tax, again, we kept it flat. You could certainly see as you get out, gas, the current estimates with HDL, our third party analyst, analyst estimates between twenty twenty one and really twenty twenty five for those gas taxes to increase. But you'll see with the discussion of electric vehicles, depending, you know, there'll be lawsuits, but what happens with the governor's executive order, you'll start to see this trend probably down, you know, and and that would be a positive way. So we estimate this number could potentially trend down. But again, you could estimate, you know, anywhere from two to to three million dollars over this period of time. You can see our TAM measure A and double A funds, we kept it flat. We did not add any additional grants. We average probably about a half a million plus annually in grants, but we I left this out just to be conservative following Daria's approach. So you could also think about that. Again, you can see the SB one funds, those are pretty, those are dedicated. And then you have these three funds, the Recreation Capital Fund, Traffic Improvement Plan Fund, the Village Traffic Improvement Fund. And there's a congestion relief fund. Those are closed, but we currently have funds available there. One of the things I know Adam is talking about in the planning commission will be discussing moving forward is in future development, as we get into the adaptation conversation. One of the things I know Adam is talking about in the planning commission will be discussing moving forward is in future development, as we get into the adaptation conversation. Is that something we're going to want to consider of fees to if you want to develop in our town? You should contribute instead of maybe to our streets and roads as we have in the past, maybe to the adaptation side. So. There'll be some discussions being considered and potential revenue streams moving forward there. The big one that I really want to emphasize for our hillsides, our wooey area. Measure C fire tax was a huge. Huge success. It's currently a ten year property tax. That that tax goes straight to the town of Corder Madera, and then we divert it to the central Marin Fire Authority in conjunction with Larkspur. Our share is approximately eight hundred and three thousand annually. That goes to code enforcement, education. It goes to, you know, mitigation, vegetation management. Policies, anything, a little bit of staffing that helps support Todd Vando's position. Would it, which is a great success for us moving forward. And so. And it also all special projects, you'll also see it's exciting below that. There's additional funding that comes in with measure C for regions. And so we're in the central Marin region. And so on average, and this is a conservative number, it'll be higher than this, I'll tell you, but I just left it conservative. Every few years, we'll have an opportunity within Corder Madera to do a big project. The first one that's being discussed, Bob Ravazio, our council member is is our representative, he's on the board. They're going to be considering up to a three million dollar grant package for Corder Madera and Larkspur to do two hundred feet of. You know, in environmentally sound way, but clearance. Having a buffer at the top of our basically border from Larkspur. Border all the way around our bowl in Corder Madera from the west to the east side. And so it's up to a three million dollar project. We're really excited about that. I I put a million dollars here for it just to be conservative. As we move forward, we're going to have other opportunities. And so the big picture thing for our community is that we have. You know, eleven, twelve million dollars dedicated to this fire mitigation and making us safer. Again, this is conservative because we we ended the ten year. Measure at twenty thirty, twenty thirty one. Where we anticipate that it would be successful and it'll get renewed. But again, we're taking a conservative approach to this. And so that's why you get the range in my estimates from. You know, one fifty three to to one sixty, one seventy. The other one's the sanitary district. We haven't raised fees for the sanitary district two in nine years. And so we developed a five year plan with the help of the sanitary district board and RJ's recommendations. Of really, you know, attacking our infrastructure as we improve our streets, we want to improve the sanitary district lines underneath, provide grants and supports. For lateral replacements. And so here. This, this number in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, it's two point six million annually moving forward. That is strictly available to capital improvement projects. We bring in about. Just under seven million dollars annually for the sanitary district. So that 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 takes care of our debt payment, our cost for the CMSA. For staffing, for maintenance and all that good stuff. This this revenue stream moving forward is strictly capital improvement projects. And so staff really. Doesn't recommend, at some point, we're going to have to increase fees because we have big capital improvement needs, but we still. Probably won't recommend that until twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, start those discussions, but I wanted to give you a visual of that. So again, this is a living document. It's just the the first time, you know, you've ever had an opportunity to see it. Really, my message here and why I'm doing this is. I want the council to know that. There's a plan, we need to start sharing that. We need to start having all of our conversations wrapped around this document as we do our decision making, but we are positioned. To think about our our infrastructure, our our buildings, like it's time to do something for town hall, what that is, that's your decision. But I I don't want, I don't want you to be concerned that. This is the wrong time to make a fiscal decision. I think it's the absolute right time. We're positioned. It's just how do we do it? And with that, I'll stop there. Thanks. I'm sorry I talked a lot, but it's a, there's a lot of moving parts and I just. I wanted to have it on the record. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you so much, Todd. That was a fantastic presentation, a fantastic staff report, very in depth, very thorough, a lot for us to unpack there. I think and council, let me know if you don't think this is a good idea, but I think maybe what we should do is we'll ask our questions. We'll turn it over to public comment and then we'll come back to the council and we'll just go one by one through each of us. Give our kind of our overarching opinions on the three options that are outlined here. So at the end of the day, that's what staff is asking for direction on right now is is, you know, what's our hot take on the three options they give us? And more specifically, is there is there one or two options that we can eliminate? Does that sound like a good plan to everyone? Okay, great. So first, we will start with questions, strictly questions from council for staff. Anybody have questions? Yeah, Fred.
Yeah, Todd, if there was a move away from the current town hall, say to another space somewhere else, more on a long term basis. What would happen to the old town hall?
Yeah, so big picture, and I think you had a citizen in the area, I think wants to discuss it a little bit too, but I think. What what we've been starting to think about is it would provide an opportunity for us to do a project, right? We could sell it, we could keep it and develop it. I think it would open an opportunity for us. It's an opportunity from a needs assessment standpoint. As you think about the fire department, Station fourteen, that is onsite, they could potentially. Renovate and expand their operation onsite there. It could be an opportunity and Central Marin Fire Authority could purchase that from the town. Again, as it relates to this conversation, another thing that staff has been looking at through the fire authority is doing a needs assessment, but looking at. Potentially the opportunity to combine Station thirteen and fourteen and a centralized location in Corder Madera. As long as, you know, it meets the calls for service and the. Staffing and the response time analysis, but potentially looking at the the CHP site if they potentially move in the next five to seven years. And so you could potentially have a situation as an option, it's one of many. But you could potentially have this fire station move and town hall move, and you would have that complete space available for the town to. Develop potentially. The other piece attached to it, I just want to give a big picture. And again, I'm just talking big picture, but that's what we do. We've made movement on the on the post office site. So the post office is about to, depending on how council direct staff. We're going to join them and and kind of through that with the help of Keegan and Copan. We're going to go and look at, we've identified two to three potential sites in town to move their operation. Away from there. They're now on a month to month lease agreement. They want to move out of the site because the building is deteriorating and. A number of circumstances, but that is not if it's when, and I believe it is this year, hopefully before the summertime. So you potentially have this. Opportunity at the post office site and our current site, town hall, and maybe the firehouse over the next period of years. Were were positioned to. Evaluate what what we would want to consider potentially.
Do we, do we know?
Do you know what that it's it's zoned for? Or what would be allowed there, just high level?
Yeah, that's a question for Adam.
Does the town own the the post office building?
No.
Okay, so that's a third party owner, not not the, is that the federal government, the post office that owns it then?
No, the post office leases it. There's a, there's a family trust. They own the post office site. They have a family business across the nation, really. Leasing properties to to the government. But this is one that the town, even though we don't own it, it's an opportunity to discuss options and big picture and and possibly like. Use it.
Because it's based on what you just said, the CHP option is forty five Clement adjacent of an adjacent property to that property?
Yes.
Good, thanks.
Adam, did you want to speak to that zoning question?
Yeah, I sure can. It's it's actually currently zoned the same as town hall and the firehouse. So it's public, semi-public. So. It is more of an institutional use category right now. And obviously, though, if the if the use changes, there would. Be in a potential opportunity to at least engage with the existing property owner and have a discussion about. What new use they may want to pursue there.
Okay. And then Todd, how much square feet are you looking at that you would need if you did move out? Cause I I know like Hunt Plaza is huge. Nolan's another one. I think it's over ten thousand square feet. You made it sound you may need only like six thousand, eight thousand plus minus.
I think eight thousands are cut off because we want to, we're going to want to have a community room, you know, and that's why I still I would use as the blueprint because we've already done our needs assessment. I would really follow. The current addition in, you know, construction project, I would follow that. That square footage analysis. So it's eight to ten thousand square feet.
Okay, and then wherever we move, we'd have to do tenant improvements, correct? As far as that community room up doing any upgrades. So there's going to be a, there's a cost to that also.
Yeah, I think, and again, I gave you a high level. It's a great question. Council member can see, so I know others have asked this. I think what you're going to find when you start to look at these sites and there's pros and cons to all, but I think it it's. Based on this, the purchase price, and then those renovations are going to really mirror what the construction of the town hall project is going to be. They may even exceed it. Probably would exceed it. The other thing is there's huge maintenance moving forward for a new building. Like, right? I I just using the the Central Marine Police Authority building, knowing that firsthand. It's a new state of the art building, but there's maintenance costs that you have to consider. But there's also ongoing maintenance cost for some of those office buildings that are much older that we would also have to consider that we haven't analyzed yet. But so, yeah, it's it's something we we need to analyze further.
Plus, you mentioned it before, I think almost all these buildings that you have here, they're all in flood zones, correct? Pretty much.
Yeah, we would control Hunt Plaza because we could control our future a little bit there. But yes, they are both in an area. Lucky Drive that that floods, it's a concern and. We would have to have a long term answer to that.
Okay. And then on the old city hall, should we be concerned about, I want to say the well being of staff members? Given that I think you mentioned in your report, there's asbestos in there. I know there's multiple issues. I just want to make sure about the well built, well being. Of town employees and that's being taken care of. We're not putting them at any kind of health risk long term.
Yeah, it's one I think about all the time and it's another great question. I think honestly, you know, and staff, you know, some of my staff are like, I think we're going to be okay for the next twelve to eighteen, twenty four months. Honestly, as I look at it. I'm I'm pretty close. Yeah, I think that's that's really going to control my decision making. I'm really close to bringing something to council to say I need to. Order a series of trailers across the street or move staff. I I am not comfortable keeping in that in that situation.
So Todd, based on that, that was one of my questions is with option two. You know, we can keep waiting for the ultimate new property to open up, but also is there a timeline on option two where, you know, we would basically say we need to. Do X by X amount of time. I think that that helps me understand what we're really giving direction for. Is this? Going to be in two months or is this an option that could go out in a year, right? Because that that has really different impacts and it's hard to understand in the, but yeah, the 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 timeline. So it would be helpful and we didn't discuss it, but I think we need to if we're going to give further direction on it.
Right. And my staff report, so good question. Let's talk about option one for now. Option one, I I mentioned under the the sequel we had. I I gave you a little bit of outdated information. Sequel has been completed, the sequel study and the planning commission has recommended it to council. So that is done and that that's one that would take a lot of time, right? So. That's and Adam can jump in there too, if necessary. So that would be our holdup. If if council were to consider option one. Staff is ready through the process to bring this project to you. Actually, we're ready now to bring it to you. Like that's, it's ready to go. We wanted to have this discussion first. And so we could, if that was council's direction, option one, we would come back to you in February and we would start the process, like we would go immediately. And I I assume and RJ, Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, we're looking at an eighteen month process for option one. Would it be up to twenty four months if the, let's say the council green light at this project in February? What what are we looking at? Just high level for option one?
Maybe Adam will talk process. I know we have. Probably six months of kind of final design work before we hit construction. And then obviously we want to hit the construction season appropriately and also want to hit our bidding at the right time to get the optimum pricing. So. Definitely poison ourselves for as early as I would think realistically. You know. Constructing early in in twenty twenty two. It could be fast track the fall if that was. If there's an extra push there, but I think starting early in a in a calendar cycle would get us a long productive season of of dry weather.
Would you estimate completion again, RJ? I mean, it's high level, just not holding you to mind.
Trying to recall, I, I want to say we had it around ten months. Does that? Sound about right, Adam? When we discussed it kind of initially, I think it was around ten months for. Structure itself.
Yeah, I think it was a good year. Yeah, ten to twelve months. And potentially even a a little bit more, but.
Yeah, I think that was more of, you know, getting to where staff can move in and still rounding out the edges and doing the finishing touches and those things.
Was at the end of twenty twenty two? Is that what you were saying or the end of?
Yeah, yeah. End of twenty twenty two. Was was kind of the mindset of kind of hitting that calendar cycle at the at the best time.
So that's a moving target. So what I would tell you is that would change a little bit. I I think still, if if the council and the community were comfortable. I would want to call it an eyesore because the trailers are the modulars aren't the best. We, that's what we do. We'd still, it doesn't change my recommendation. I think that we would, we would move it around the site to make it work, but we want to keep staff together. I still. Again, the the leasing is such a high dollar amount. I think we're looking at, we would move staff around around the site, do the best we could, do some patchwork until construction of twenty twenty two. The end of twenty twenty two. You consider it option two. So it depends on what the site is. I'll tell you, if the San Clemente site worked or one oh one Nolan worked. They're limited, probably renovations at those sites if they were to be. Workable. And so it would just be the purchase price and we would want to jump on that in the next thirty days of. Some closed session discussions on real estate acquisition and 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 talk about strategy there. Hunt Plaza is a little different. It's in bankruptcy court. But there's a window here to potentially jump on that. And so if that was one that we are interested in. Again, we would want to consider something in the next thirty days, like these sites. There's some opportunity potentially there to consider and then renovations.
Todd, when you were describing the Hunt Plaza, were you saying currently based on the most recent investigations that your staff is not recommending to? Look at Hunt anymore or with Hunt, was it not providing the elevator and making the second floor accessible?
Yeah, what I would say when council's thinking about options, I wouldn't focus on any one because they all, I think it's it's the option of, do you want to consider something like that? Because I think you need a lot more analysis. There, what I would say is on a high level, what is your cost? Do you have a, do you have a budget? Max. And what I, what I would say is Hunt Plaza, I think Hunt Plaza is. With the renovations and some of the improvements that we may have to make there upfront. It may, and my staff report was a little bit lower, but I think it's closer to the million plus range. You know, depending on the purchase price, it could end up being higher than what the cost is to construct a new town hall is all I'm saying.
And and Todd, one thing I'll just add there because it's similar to you pointing out that that it's best not to focus right now on on individual properties. But more importantly, to focus on whether we're talking about buying, leasing, renovating, you know, those types of things. I think it's also maybe. Important for us to remind ourselves that what we're thinking about a solution that needs to last Corder Madera fifty to a hundred years. And when you put it in perspective, that timeframe, I think whether we choose an option that allows us to make our move in six months or nine months or twelve months or fifteen months is maybe. Not is is not paramount, right? I think more important is is what are the implications for the town, both financially and in terms of. You know, the the amenity to the city over over the coming, you know, decade. So that was just one thing.
So I understand that Eli, I just, you know, when it comes to real estate, the each each individual thing is it, you need to evaluate the details to really understand what the impacts are. I'll give you an example like Hunt Plaza. Ultimately, if it's five hundred thousand, you know, rent and then it only costs three hundred thousand to maintenance it and there's two hundred thousand coming more in, that's two hundred thousand against. Our occupying half the building, right? And so therefore our like compared to a leasing option or other things, there's actually money coming in theoretically, right? So in that, and it's class C, so it it's, we're getting more value for for the office per square foot than if we rent glass cubes, you know, at one oh one oh one Nolan. So. They're not apples to apples. And so I do like to look at each individual one because. You know, if I was to say fiscal prudence is if we could have a temporary lot like, so the thing, the other thing is is. The way it's structured is you're choosing one or the other. It's like we're buying this property, that's going to be the town hall or we're going to renovate the town hall. And. I think that there could be mitigated strategies and 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 so that's my question to Todd is if we buy Hunt Plaza, for example, and it pays for the temporary location of. Town hall for three to four years while we really work out, you know, a good final solution. you know, a good final solution because, you know, couldn't it be both? And therefore, and, and the other thing is, is when we talk about financing these properties, the thing that you don't show on the budget is you can always sell it back and retrieve the two to four million and then all the money that went into paying. You know, and, and you know, we're not showing that. And ultimately I think that's important for residents and for the council to understand. So based on that, I, I don't totally agree with that. I think it's much more complex and I want to look at those complexities because I think there's real advantages if we dig into it. So.
Okay, Fred, I see you've got your hand up. You're on mute, by the way, Fred, but I see you got your hand up. Todd, I think I, I interrupted you. I don't, I don't think you were finished addressing Charles's question on the timing of the three options. Is that right?
Yes, I think real quick, councilmember Lee has a good point as it relates to Hunt Plaza. Hunt Plaza is a unique property because it has that option to move staff into the building and also lease it, lease space back to others. And so that's the unique one where we really haven't found that yet in town and other property. The, the further analysis that we need to bring back to you all on that point is really spend some time with RJ to know what those ongoing maintenance costs are gonna be on that building, right? Because we have, we, we have really high level information right now. And it's, we kind of are starting to dial in what the upfront cost is. It's potentially seven figures, but also ongoing. I know their maintenance cost was in the 300 range. But what would our maintenance cost be under our circumstances with that building? And the other one is COVID-19 in this situation has brought me positive staff to really, you know, we need to bring in an expert to really give us that analysis of the trends of office space being leased. Who's in there now? How do we project moving forward? And heaven forbid, you know, something that happened to us when we bought the shopping center. You know, do we end up having a huge occupancy rate, you know, that puts us in the negative? And so that is the analysis that I owe you, but the big picture potential, as you said, councilmember Lee is there on this property. But before I spend a lot of staff time, I wanted to make sure that is a direction you all want me to go.
Yeah, Fred.
Yeah, just thought on a high level, it sounds like anything we would buy over 8,000 square feet plus or minus, we would wind up leasing that additional space out, correct? In other words, like Hunt Plaza is a good example, but then what that does also, that makes the town a landlord. Right? And it seems like we had a lot of lessons learned from the shopping center. And then just to add to it, I don't know if that's a type of business we should be in. I'm probably getting ahead of myself for public comment, but one other thing you like is that there's risk, obviously there's risk there. So go ahead, Eli. I'm sorry, I kind of went off there.
No, no, no worries. Let's just try and keep it to questions right now and then we'll do public comment and then we'll, we'll dive into our discussion after. So are there more questions from council members for staff right now? If not, I'll just ask one that I had. So Todd, I, I was just wondering regardless of, of kind of the direction that we come out of here tonight with, I think would be fantastic if for, for the next time we have this discussion, if we could get some sort of a spreadsheet that really clearly lays out and everybody else has been touching on this already, but really just clearly lays out all of the financial implications of each of the options we're looking at. So for obviously the renovation project, then for, for any properties that we're seriously looking at considering buying. And then also I think like a, you know, a no project scenario where the only cost is, is ongoing maintenance and like any emergency repairs to town hall, which, you know, is the situation we're all trying to avoid. But I think if we can get a spreadsheet that looks at for each scenario, you know, what are the upfront costs? You know, what purchase price, construction, renovation, TI, what have you? What are the tax implications? What are any, you know, any potential revenue that might exist? Just so we can get a really clear, you know, kind of picture of what it is. And then if, if we can find a way to kind of lay out what, what each scenario's relative break even point is relative to each other. If, if we can do that analysis, I think that'd be helpful. That was my one question that I had. Any other questions for staff before we go ahead and open this up to public comment? Alrighty, then we're gonna go ahead and turn this over to the public. So any members of the public who would like to speak on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. We're gonna start with Steve and Steve, thank you very much for your patience. We appreciate it.
Steve Hoffmar here. My turn, Eli?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much Eli for, and Todd for speaking about the 50 to 100 years. You know, we've been working for a long time. Todd's been, been super helpful in working on the vision of our whole corner here from Pixley to Tamalpais to our street Willow. And I really want the town council staff and the foundation to know that we need the residents and citizens of this town to rep, have representation to fully participate in the planning direction as we proceed for changes on the town hall, the fire department and post office properties. Our neighborhood wants, you know, low density development to ensure proper standard of living. I think we haven't really talked about A-Bag yet and what's gonna be happening in the future. And I know that my neighbor Peter Hensel is gonna be talking about that. And that's gonna be a huge concern for our area because we have traffic, noise, parking, safety, crime. And we want to keep this area the old town feeling. So, you know, we want to be informed. We had a really nice meeting last week with Todd and I, I really want people to know, you know, Joe and I have been in construction for over 100 years almost. And we were telling you guys from the very beginning that we should have scraped town hall. And I don't want to go back. I want everything to be forward. I mean, nobody wants to be going through what you guys are going through with COVID. You know, it's a really hard time. I do want to, I want you guys to look at some areas that we already own that I've kept on talking about. Being in construction, when you have property that's flat and you have storage like the Petco area and the parking lot and not saying to go ripping down the rec center, but you know, we already own those properties. And you guys are looking at trying to buy things and as, as Fred just said, you know, there's gonna be management issues. So I want you guys to really take into consideration, you know, looking at the 50 to 100 years, trying to keep, you know, our area, the, the old feel, but make it maybe where we have the post office and the fire department on the east side or maybe at the movie theater and we really try to get the town hall feel down near the park. So that people can, you know, drive into the area near the Madera Plaza and the rep center and, and be able to participate as a town with the people and the citizens.
Even I'm, I'm sorry, Steve, that's your, your three minutes there. It's just.
All I had to say, but I want, I want you guys really to have vision in the system. We all tried to help. Thank you.
Yes, we hear you loud and clear on that. Thank you very much. And if you have anything else to say, please, please go ahead and, and email us at publiccomment@tcmail.org and we'll all read it and it will go in the public record as well. Next, we have a hand up from Jim Andrews. And Jim, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. There you go.
Okay, something pop. What I would strongly urge the council to sort of reconcile themselves to is you're gonna have to get the staff out of the current building no later than the end of the year. And it could be a lot sooner than that. So I would sort of, so when you're making your plans, think of getting the staff out of the current building. And then if you're gonna build a new building, realize the staff's gonna be wherever it is for two to three years. And, you know, just reconcile yourself to that fact. That's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Next hand up is from Peter Hensel. And Peter, you can go ahead and unmute yourself whenever you're ready.
There we go. Yeah, this is, I'm just getting my feet on the ground with the Zoom here. But anyway, just straight off the top, I really like the design of the town hall remodel. What I've seen, I mean, we spent a lot of money, a lot of time in coming up with this thing. I think it fits the area. It's close to Old Town Square. So it, it would lend to keeping the ambience and the history of the area. So I think that's a wonderful thing. And also it's conducive to public participation in government, the design. I mean, it would be an inviting place for people to come and, you know, also participate, you know, in the public meetings. And I think as was mentioned last time, we were talking about this, that was it Planning Commission or whatever, that the neighborhood parking is just probably can be worked out to everybody's satisfaction. You know, Todd was giving some interesting points on that that gave some more illumination because we definitely have a parking problem here on Willow. I mean, it's maxed out right now, you know. So there has to be places for people to come and park, but if there's less employees actually working on site, you know, in the new remodeled town hall because they're, you know, working at home or whatever. I mean, that's a trend, you know, and I, I really do believe that's a trend that's happening. And maybe, you know, more parking becomes available at the fire station and it moves. So I just think that it's gonna be worked out somehow, you know, with the parking. So I'm not so worried about that anymore. But what I am worried about is, you know, if we, Steve, Steve was saying scrape. I hate to, it's a, it's a real construction word, but scrape town hall, you know, nothing's there anymore, you know, and then we get into the development business. I mean, my God, the housing mandate that we're stuck with is 729 units from MTCA Bag. I mean, I just can't imagine what a massive thing that's gonna end up be, be erected there. And we certainly don't want any more, you know, town ridge residences or, or wind cups or whatever you want to call it. I mean, we need to keep it kind of low profile and then fitting with the, the area, you know, because we don't have tall buildings around where we live. So I think the design is just great. And I, I just really encourage you to stay with it, even if there's more money due to the fact that now there's asbestos that's gotta be removed and new roof and so on. I mean, there, there's always these unforeseen things that come up, but I just think a lot of work's been done on this thing. And it's a good design and it's gonna be very attractive to people. I don't think people are gonna want to come to other parts of the town so much as they would like to come to the old, old town, you know. And that's what we want is citizens participating in government. So there it is. My time.
Thank you so much, Peter. Thank you. Really appreciate it. We do not have any other hands up from audience members right now. Rebecca, do we have any emailed public comments?
We have not received any email public comments on this item.
Okay, and we just had another hand go up. So we're gonna hear from Pat Rivasio.
Hi there. Boy, I've watched this go through a lot of thinking and I have not always been thinking that we should do the town hall on that site, but Peter Hensel just made some really good points. And also I think that the, getting rid of the post office is a game changer in what you've just told us. And also the fact that we have the financial resources to do this despite these times is a game changer. So I say, I, I, I recommend the council just say, look, we want to do the right thing. We want to do the big thing. We want to do something that will, you know, we'll be proud of, our kids will be proud of 50 years from now. And, you know, that's not renting out Hunt Plaza. That's, that's really investing our, our time and money into creating something right. You know, and it could be a campus. I mean, if you get rid of the post officers, you know, you might be able to use that for further fire administration or, or further planning. And I'd also would suggest that we look at the duplex there, which I know the town owns, so that could be converted into additional office space. And you start to get this kind of quirky, cool campus. It's got, you know, the nice new building and then some adjacent buildings and it's like Peter said, it still feels like a small town, but it's a highly functional, you know, town hall, which we're not gonna get by buying an existing building. An existing office building is gonna be like a boring administrative place. And I don't know that people are gonna really take pride in going there, you know? I think they're gonna want to, they're, they're gonna love it if we do something really special on, on the existing site. So I say, go Todd, go. I think you're killing it and I think we should do it. And I'm gonna stop with a whole minute to spare. How's that?
Thank you very much, Pat. Appreciate everybody's comments. Now we do not have any of the other hands up, so we will close public comment and bring it back to the council for our discussion. Again, staff is looking for, for kind of high level feedback on, on the three options presented in, in their staff report. I, I guess I'll just go first to kind of like set the template. And I'll just say as, as kind of an overarching comment, I think, you know, Todd, thanks again for this really clear staff report. I think you've laid out, you know, the, the need for this is undeniable, right? We've got mold, leaks, asbestos, you name it. Besides the fact that our town hall is, is too small. It was built in, in the 30s. It's 90 years old. It was not built to last. I think, you know, I think that the, the long-term approach that you're taking is really the right strategic approach, looking for a solution that's gonna last quarter Madera 50 to 100 years. I can tell you that when this town hall was built, I don't think that they were thinking on that time scale and it shows. And I, you know, I think I'm, I'm really glad that we're in the position that we're in. Like Pat said, like a lot of, of my colleagues have noted that we are in a position financially where we are able to actually look at providing a quality, durable, resilient, long-term solution here. That's gonna serve quarter Madera well for the coming decades. I think that's really important. And that we can do it without new taxes or without impacting projects or services is incredible. So with that, I'll just go through the three options real fast. Option one, renovation slash addition, I would say, you know, I think it's, it's good that it's a long-term community asset for us that we own. It's definitely the priciest or among the most pricey options. But, but again, you know, I think we're in the position because of the money that we've saved up with an eye to big projects like this coming down the pipeline. I think it's a plus that we would not be paying rent, you know, we'd not be paying rent on a building that taxpayers have no equity in. I, I think that's a plus. And then just the fact that we would have control, total control owning the building over its use and operations, I think is important. So I, I support option one. I think that's good. Option two, buy, I think very creative. I, I want to say kudos to you for thinking outside the box there. I sure as heck would not have thought of that. So I, I thought that was pretty smart when he came to us. First with Hunt Plaza and now with several other options that we could potentially investigate going forward. Like my colleagues noted, there's risk involved there. There's potential revenue for, with a larger building like Hunt Plaza, but there's risk, both in terms of how the property value might fluctuate and in terms of how the rental income might fluctuate. And I, and I would certainly, I, I would feel badly if we bought a building that's more building than we actually need ourselves. And then say the rental market crashed and we were suddenly, you know, losing money on this building that we had bought hoping to get revenue. So I think that's a situation we should avoid. I think that's also kind of where, where we start to get into potentially land banking. If we, we own this property already where we are here, if we're now, and, and, you know, a, a member of the public mentioned, does it really make sense to buy more property when the town owns so much property already? I think that that's a good point. You know, we've, we've discussed in the past, especially in the context of Park Madera, land banking and is that really our role as a public body? I would argue probably not unless there's some sort of pressing public interest. And I would say in this case, that pressing interest, that need is not there. I think we have more than enough land, you know, even on this property alone to, to accommodate our needs. And I, and I also would note that buying a property, depending on the property and the tenant improvements may well be no cheaper or not significantly cheaper than the remodel project in the first place. So, so to me, when you get into that territory, it kind of begs the question of why, you know, why go to the trouble? So I'm, I'm kind of lukewarm on, on option two. I would say I'm, I'm certainly open to examining more properties that you and the staff might bring forward and having that discussion down the road. But, you know, I think it's, doesn't seem necessarily like the best path forward. And then the lease or potentially lease to own is, in my opinion, probably the least favorable option. I think it puts us in the least favorable financial position. You know, we're, we're essentially kind of then committing to pissing away hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money over the coming years with nothing to show for it. It's not really, it's not a permanent or financially sustainable solution. And again, it gives us limited control over the facility, over its use and operations because we don't own it. So say, you know, say there's a disaster and we want to run a disaster shelter out of our town hall that we're leasing and the landlord says no. I think that, that's a situation that we do not want to be in. So I would not support option three and that is my high level feedback. Who would like to go next? David?
May I associate with your remarks as, as, as follows? Option three, I agree is the least appealing and, and the simple renting of a couple more trailers gets us to the same short-term solution. Leasing isn't a long-term solution and it's, it's really uncomfortable as far as trying to persuade the public that that is where they should go for services. Option two, you know, I, I think I, I feel some of the enthusiasm that I believe that Charles is. that I believe that Charles is feeling about the opportunities of being a landlord. I worry about a couple of things. One is what you mentioned of what if there's a downturn in the leasing market. But another is, actually, if we're successful, there's something called unrelated business taxable income, UBTI. And if a nonprofit like a town starts to be making a lot of money by owning real estate, you might not be able to keep all of that because it's not directly in your mission. And you may have to hand it over to the feds and to California. That brings me back to option one, and I am so glad to be able to say that I really appreciate Peter Hensel's remarks. This is the second time in 15 years that I have agreed with Peter. And as well, Pat, I think that the opportunity for exciting the public about a new center, the only acquisition of real estate that I've heard about tonight that I really have some interest in is the potential acquisition of the ground lease under the post office, because it takes care of the noise negative that is coming out of that midnight operations there and is potentially a way to expand one or another of the uses that we have. So that's my high-level response, thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
Okay, so I also agree, I'm not a fan of the short-term or long-term leasing for government institutions like a town hall. So I definitely cannot support that. I feel like number two is the path forward if we want to think like that in that it's not a permanent but more a longer-term kind of strategy, depending on finance and other things to get the final, you know, 50 to 100-year building done. And I think by approving number two, as Todd has put it forth, it allows you to look at things like the post office. And in general, yeah, I am, because I've been around and heard about, you know, our commercial endeavors in the past and the skepticism that that's a very dangerous political game for the town to deal with. You know, but on the topic of land banking, I think it's totally appropriate for even 15-year, but especially a 50 to 100-year, to think about what adjacencies and strategies we can do as a town to consolidate or create larger groups of properties, you know. So Hunt Plaza being next to the Capitol, you know, next to our Public Works, or, you know, some understandings of the CHP building and adjacencies to that, et cetera, et cetera, that ultimately, if the mission is a longer-term one of consolidation or updating into new regions and transportation and stuff like that, I would love to have those discussions. Ultimately, we're not, we're only the arbitrator, the public also has to agree with it. But I also think by opening it up and having that discussion, it really makes it present that we can look at that. I think during the initial discussions with the town hall, option one, which I also support and think would be good, a lot of people wanted to have this more thorough analysis of other properties. And I think that this is an avenue where that can really show that we're fully vetting that. And it sounds like a lot of people, once they see it really actionable, are agreeing that maybe one is better. My only thing is, is, you know, one, I like the design, but the temporary trailers, I would just want to understand its impact on the fire operations, because that is a, you know, emergency response area, that is the parking lots and turnarounds. And, you know, also by taking less parking away from what already is an underserved area, what the impacts of that would be. And that's why, you know, maybe the adjacent buildings, like having a temporary that occupy those, you know, and that kind of thing that I think we still have a long way to go to understand the temporary phasing of that. I also really, you know, I have appreciated RJ's budgeting on projects that we've approved and seen the execution of, and that usually they come back under budget or on budget unless there's really unusual circumstances. I am afraid of the kind of context of even down to the studs, because are these 50 to 100-year wood studs, right? Is it a metal building? Like, the other thing is, is in a lot, I've done quite a lot of substantial renovations over the last 10 years for large institutional buildings. And really, it's when you get into the foundations of those much older buildings, those are inadequate. And so usually is better to and cheaper as, you know, others suggested to maybe even just scrape it and start over. And it might be faster also, because basically tearing it down to the studs has a time consequence. So, you know, that's just lessons learned. Everybody always thinks you're going to save money by keeping a couple studs or a wall, but I've almost 100% never seen that actually happen. And I would hate to ruin RJ's track record with that one, because I'd rather know that we were going in on a $9 to $10 million project, but getting it all new than to have a lower budget to approve, starting out, and then ultimately find, you know, have an oops at the end, because those are exactly the kind of transparency issues that I want to resolve. And my role in government is not to, not to get the project off and then discuss things later. I think that if we're transparent and true about it, we can own it as a town. And so, so I support one and two. I'd like to eliminate number three, and those are my direction of things that I think would improve the discussion moving forward.
Good point, Charles, thank you. Todd, did you want to speak real fast to just placement of trailers and how that all might impact fire operations?
Yeah, well, of course, as you know, I have a little public safety background, and I'm not going to do anything that'll, that'll impact that. My first recommendation would not impact it. The cleanest way to not impact RJ and his work would be to take three double-wide, I call them double wides, but you would take a total of six trailers. You'd combine them, and you'd put them in the Pixley parking lot, where you put them right there on the border of the park on Pixley, and we would just move our whole operation over there. That's what you would do for two or three years, as Jim Andrews stated. And that would be the cleanest way. And again, if you think about that, you're looking at an annual lease of $100,000 plus, plus or minus on an annual basis for those six trailers, and you just move us across the street. I mean, that's really what you would do, that's the cleanest. And RJ would be happy, and he'd be out of the parking lot.
And the other thing is, is ultimately, if it's leasing for those trailers, are there ones on the market used or whatever that could be even cheaper for the long term that we can purchase and then repurpose after the fact? So I'd like to see that study as well, as you've heard from me in the past.
That's who we definitely rely on you for that. And I would just make, I know what Jerry wants to say, but I'll just say, one other thing is something when we started this project, to save costs, because every dollar mattered, the remodel was part of the project, not a total scrape. It's something that, you know, I think we could certainly challenge staff with to come back of what those estimates are and to relook at that, because I'll tell you that by doing it makes it a lot easier from an architecture, you know, standpoint, a design standpoint, for sure. You know, because that caused us a lot of problems, but we were trying to control actual cost. Yeah.
Great.
So if I could just have it to speak to costs a little bit. So the expansion, if you will, it would be basically a completely new building with a seismic joint that separated that from the new building. So that whole part of the bill will be brand-new, and you would get all the same kind of efficiencies that Charles mentioning on that side. The upstairs of the existing building on the interior has, for the most part, been renovated. So, you know, other than, I'm sure there's some interior walls being added and other things. I think it's mostly the exterior facade that would be kind of getting that, that matching look. And then, yeah, otherwise downstairs, you know, it's, we're kind of, as part of this latest round and looking at costs, we're really just kind of using that as kind of extra, if you will, archive and storage space and not really kind of using it for office space, just because it's, you know, it's got so many deficiencies. So that's kind of where we are at this point.
Trying to get the entire building done as an essential facility? Or ultimately, are we not held to the seismic required requirements of like a, you know, what is it, category four, you know, like it has to be completely functional right after? Or by seismically separating them, are we putting those functions in the building that ultimately could survive major events? And then, like you said, putting, if I understood it in that way, then I can understand it. But if I think of it as one congruent town hall, it's harder for me to accept that we are keeping, you know, old redwood studs when we have seismically braced steel on the other. I just want to understand that.
You know, Jared can speak better to how much seismic retrofitting would be happening on the old building. The new side of it, which is the bulk of it, including that council chambers slash potential community center room, that resource and those emergency facilities, that will all be, you know, it's not timber design. I believe it's, you know, steel beams and much more robust to handle those types of events, you know, seismic events and other things. And so really, the trickiness of working the existing building and just kind of tying in all the utilities that need to happen, but we have a good game plan there.
That also brings up, if we're going to scrutinize option A, would that, I think, an analysis of option two for these building investments? If ultimately, they're going to house the town hall for a more, a longer duration? Or just in general, be an investment that the town's liable for understanding them from that kind of seismic and, you know, just like the same criteria that we're holding A to. So it's really closer to apples to apples of what we're getting for what seems like the same cost.
Okay, great, thank you, Charles. And I think these issues that you raise are important, and we can dive more into these, I think, at our next public discussion of this, because I think that'll be, we'll be kind of narrowing down options, and then we'll be able to drill deeper into probably options one and two. Anyway, who would like to go next? Fred, and then Bob?
Thanks, Bob. For me, I'll try to keep this somewhat short. Option three to me is off the table. I just think financially, it just, it doesn't make sense and it's not feasible. For option number two, I think if we could find something small enough that we could fit into, in other words, less than 8,000 square feet, and it's just us, and it's just being used for city hall, depending on cost, I'd be open to listening to it. I think anything larger than that, to me, I don't think we should be using public funds to be land banking, getting into, I don't want to say speculation, you know. When you buy an office building like Hunt Plaza, in the good times, it's great and you're making money. In the downturn, and all of a sudden, we're taking budget hits potentially because we're fronting money for taxes, for a new roof, for expenses, it just doesn't go well. And I think there's been lessons learned that we should learn from buying the shopping center. The other thing also, if we do buy something, then we get a double whammy, because suddenly do we become a landlord, so we're put in that position? But then on the other end, what do we do with the old town hall? And now are we playing developer or getting into some kind of develop? I just don't think those are businesses that as a town we should be in. So I think option one, to me, at this point in time, again, depending on what could happen with smaller buildings, to me, it's the most feasible at this point of time. I think a lot of work has already been done on it. I think it solves long-term, extremely long-term, probably past when I'll be dead. But again, long-term, going back to Hunt Plaza, I think that building is 45 years old already, is built in 75. So all of a sudden, 25 years from now, you know, you're looking at a building that's 70 years old, which is going to have issues the next X amount of years. If we build a new city hall, it's brand-new, and it's built, you know, up to code, modern technology, assume, you know, green building and all that. So I just think it may be a better way to go. I do have just two quick questions for Todd. One is, it came up about the shopping center. Can you maybe explain just high-level why that was kind of off the table, even though the town owns it, if it wasn't off the table?
I mean, yeah, so the town center owns it, not the town. So the town center owns the 770 building on the south side of quarter Madera Town Center, and then the Mary Trade Building.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the shopping center, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, the shopping center, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, so to Steve.
We own that one.
Yeah, I know, I do too. Yeah, so if you go back to, and there's, there is a bunch of documentation on the website and in the background of the staff report. But again, that was one of the first things we did. So when we took the issue to council in October of 2018, we then formed a working group, which was council members, planning commissioners, staff and members of the community. And that's what we did. We did an analysis and needs assessment, and then an analysis, a site analysis. The current site, all sites owned by the town of quarter Madera. The shopping center was discussed, town park was discussed, and the current site. Town park immediately went off the table, because the feedback that staff has always heard from the community is, don't touch our sacred town park. And so we weren't going to, we weren't going to recommend that. And so the second piece was, was a shopping center. And so originally, when the shopping center was purchased, there were a lot of big-picture, long-term kind of opportunities discussed. But really, you know, when you, it starts with the finance ad hoc subcommittee, and if Jim Andrews is still on the call, he can certainly speak to this as well. But we have a number of, we really can't do anything to that shopping center until you get into the 20, early 2030s. It's because of what we owe in our debt payments, what we bring in in lease revenue, and what we have to pay for that, ultimately, for that property. And our biggest revenue stream is actually the pet, is the pet club. It's over 300,000 annually. So if you were to do something, you would actually move the pet club out and theoretically build something where you're going to lose a $300,000 revenue stream that already has, you know, over those years, we've finally broken even. But we have a one, I think it's a $2 million deficit right now on that fund because of having these general funds to offset revenues to expenditures. And so that was our recommendation, that we not consider anything to that building or to that property until 2030, when the debt service starts to go away. Some of our leases are renewed, and then again, we can then consider, you know, something more long-term, you know, potentially the firehouse, a community center remodel. Things like that could be considered when you get into the 2030s, but not before, not before that. And it looks like it just becomes economically unfeasible.
Jim's here and ready to comment about the, so we'll bring him on. And Jim, if you want to comment briefly on just the finance committee's findings with regards to Park Madera Center?
Yeah, basically, with the refinancing of the, well, I'll call it the mortgage, but it's really a lease participation loan. But basically, we're at cash, around cash flow break-even. So revenue generated by Park Madera Center is enough to pay off the mortgage on it, okay? The gas station has a long, has a fairly long-term lease with a renewal option. So unless you're willing to buy out the gas station, we won't be in a position to basically scrape the lot and put up a new facility until the mid 2030s at the earliest. So that's, and, you know, so that's one reason we excluded Park Madera Center. Also, if you do anything there, you are going to have to put pillars down the bedrock or firm soil, because if someone owns a house on the other side of town park, when I did renovation on my house, I had to put in six pillars, just so that it doesn't ooze into the bay. So those are my chief comments on it.
Great, thank you very much, Jim. And then Fred, I think you had another question, right?
Yeah, one other question, and it's probably directed towards both Todd and also you, Eli. I know tonight, we're only providing direction to staff, but do we have, I want to say, a timeline to make a decision? And I'm bringing that up, because it seems like, you know, we have one somewhat pressing issue, which is that current town hall is not in good shape. And again, I'm not trying to push timelines and make a decision right away, but I'm just trying to get an understanding of the timeline. And throwing in a disclaimer, I think we need to still engage the public a lot more on this. And again, not trying to push it. But again, I think with the way conditioned town hall is in, I think something needs to be done with that. So is there any kind of idea, timeline, just to get that out there?
Yes, I appreciate that. So what I'll say is, you know, again, I don't know if everyone's had an opportunity to go to that link on the staff report. I'm happy to pull it up right now and walk you through the process. That's been documented, that's there, and the way we've engaged the community and the neighborhood as a whole. We have, I mean, I don't know how much more engagement this council expects of staff, but I push everyone to that, to walk through it. And if there's a shortcoming, I'm happy to speak to it. I think the one shortcoming that's different, council member, because he said, is, you know, we've always talked about how we're approaching it, but are there other options? And so this is, this is the, you know, the opportunity to provide the options, the leasing, and would we purchase a property? And then also, what's new is just the deterioration of the building, right? And so my intent was to get some feedback from you tonight to understand where you are and immediately come back to you in February, because if you were to consider option two, you do have some time. You do have some time constraints. You want to really jump on some of these opportunities available to us, but obviously the council and the community needs more information. From staff's perspective, we support option one, and we think it's fiscally sustained from a fiscal standpoint, a sustainable standpoint, and from. Everything that we've approached regarding the town infrastructure, it's probably the right decision. And this analysis is really bringing us there, but we need to share that and and move that forward. But we want to make sure that we're not getting in front of the council and we're on the same page with you. Following your direction. And so I want to bring that analysis to you now that I I think I'm hearing it. I haven't heard from all of you yet. But to bring it to you probably the second meeting in February, and then I come back to you. With with wherever you land on whatever option in March for a decision, we need to move forward. And so my the engagement with the community would be between now and the first meeting in March with an expectation to move forward with whatever that direction is. And quite frankly, I'm not sure, and that would be maybe helpful too for some of the feedback for this meeting and moving forward. What the expectation is that we haven't done as this discussion from a problem standpoint, from a solution standpoint, from a thinking outside the box standpoint of options. What is the expectation of staff? For this communication, because I I feel like we are there.
Okay, thanks. To me, I'd like to see you come back in February. Because I think the other thing I worry about to a degree is right now, interest rates are low. You know, if we wait six or seven months. Again, if you could predict interest rates, you could make a lot of money, which none of us can. But, you know, they're probably more subject to rising than they are to declining. And I appreciate your comment about engaging in the neighborhood and the public, because I know you've done a tremendous amount of work on that. And I think that was reflected tonight in Hoff Myers comments and also Peter Hassel, their comments where you've engaged the community. So I think your staff is doing a great job on that. Thanks. Thanks, Eli.
Sure. Thanks, Fred. And finally, we must hear from Bob. Thank you for your patience.
Hi, I want to add a lot, lots of good comments and discussion. I'll try to be really brief. First off, yeah, I think we can eliminate option three, which is leasing. We have cash, we're in a position to own. There's no reason for us to be leasing and paying for multiple moves and all the problems that causes. As far as option two, which is purchasing something, I am not as concerned about that because I can assure you that. The level of diligence I've seen already on option two that we've done on the properties that we have. From what I can see exceeds the level of diligence the town used when they purchased the Park Madera Center. I mean, you know, you guys are really approaching this in the right way. And, you know, I think we'll know what the downfalls are and, you know, what the. What the opportunities are with something in that. So I'm okay with continuing on that. And I'm really excited about trying to build a new town hall, option one. I think I think we all are. I think we're in a position to do that. And. I think my only concern with that option is. The timeframe of keeping staff in trailers for that long. Because I know that it's already been difficult for staff to work and communicate in the current environment. And I, you know, I'm hopefully that environment will be a little bit better than where we are now. But, you know, until we get into that new building, it's going to continue to be hard for staff. But it sounds like, Todd, you've thought through all that and talked through all that. So. I'm comfortable with that. And I also just want to echo what Fred just said. I would I would say let's make a decision on this sooner rather than later. I think because I can tell you that trying to build a new building, having built several homes. Now, always takes longer than you think it's going to. Approvals take longer, planning takes longer, bidding takes longer, construction takes longer. So we should try to make a decision on this and figure out what we're going to do sooner rather than later. I think the time is now. Staff is working under very, very difficult conditions, and I want to try to correct that for them as soon as we possibly can. I think that's the best thing we can do for the town. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Bob. So Todd, to summarize, it sounds like there's the most enthusiasm for option one. We're also open to option two, and we're not interested in option three.
Thank you so much. You'll hear from us in February. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. And that concludes item six C. That's all our business items. Item seven is council reports. We'll start with the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, we highlighted the update on the statewide health order, the vaccine rollouts. We're still waiting for the final, the updated numbers, and we don't have them as of date. So I will provide. The community and the council with an update on Thursday when we receive them in the afternoon on on really how we're trending. Really hopefully to come out of this shutdown. And so the numbers as of last week were, there was some analysis there at the county level and the state level where we were starting within our region. To to trend positively potentially over the coming weeks. And so we'll have some better numbers on Thursday, and so I'll provide that update. And again, I want to be able to give you a vaccine rollout update. They're starting to really ramp up their efforts now. Everyone acknowledges that it's been slow. And so. I want to give that update to you and the community. And then, Mr. Mayor, we can share that in our community chat as well on Tuesday. So I'll. I'll postpone that update. And again, I gave the council. A quick update and members of the community may have seen it in the Marin IJ, but Mill Valley sent a letter to their. To our representatives at the state level and the governor's office about the county health order requesting an allowance for outdoor dining. That letter was in the IJ as well, and the council has a copy of it. I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention. The county managers are discussing it, discussed it last week at their last week's meeting. I know San and Somo is considering taking an item to their council for consideration. A majority of the cities and towns are waiting for this update on Thursday from the county health official. I think we all obviously want to be safe. But we also, you know, any decision making, we want it to to have, you know, science, so to speak, behind it and and. And statistics to support those as we have to enforce the order. And so I think that's really what the discussion is 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 being had. I know at all levels of the state government right now, and so we may see some updates on Thursday. And so my recommendation. Is to see how that goes. And if necessary, maybe bring up an item to the council, the first meeting of February, or if we have to have a special meeting, I'm happy to set it. I also, along those lines, just really as we, I know that the mayor, being the president of his. You know, the on the on the political side, and then I am the president of the, I get to be the president of the county managers group this year. I think one of the things along this line is is social equity. And I know both the mayor and I are moving side by side on this of, you know, really looking at. You know, some training, it's. For state and local governments, GARE is the acronym. They they put on training to really, you know, update, you know, staff level. Members as well as politicians, you know, our political leaders, our decision makers. Of opportunities of how we can bring like social equity into our decision making. And I do see outdoor dining as potentially one of those things. You know, how do we set aside one group from another? You know, and so I want to be careful with what any, if we were to consider a letter like Mill Valley or anyone else, that we kind of think about that. For a second in that conversation moving forward, because it's not as as clear as one may think. So I want you to know staff is aware of it. We're monitoring it and there'll be, I'll work through the mayor to the council on any recommendations of any changes that we should consider. You know, in the next like five to 10 days, because we know every day it does matter. And I also wanted to bring the attention of the council that. We, you know, social equity was a big conversation a few months ago, and we have not forgotten about that. Staff and the mayor, I think we're approaching it before we start to have these public conversations. We really want to educate ourselves with a third party, someone that's an expert in this area, to really bring to our attention of staff and and political leaders of. How we should really incorporate that into our decision making and then have, you know, some thoughtful public conversations. And then at each department level within your town. You know, really educate ourselves as we as we move items forward that we always have that equity component in our thought. And we just get better and better as we go, right? This is something, you know, we need to improve on as we move forward. So I wanted the council and the community to know that's that is on our list. It's very important. And we're going to move that forward. We have a manager's training. We're going to try to set up in the next sixty days. It'll it's two two hour meetings as a baseline to this conversation. As it relates to equity and how we can be better and really set up that discussion with our individual cities and towns. And I know the mayor is doing the same at his level. So all good stuff, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Todd. Any questions? All right, let's go into our council member reports. We'll start with Fred.
Yeah, I attended, we had our first meeting for Project Home Key, the working group. And we're going to be meeting on a monthly basis. That group includes representatives from Marin County, four residents. From the town and then Todd, Adam, and then myself are on that committee also. What we just were that working group and also Catholic charities. What we decided to do is we kind of broke it into four different subgroups. When it's metrics for success, that'll look at measuring how successful the program is. Exterior design as far as landscaping and that type of work. Volunteerism, what how the community volunteer, for example, like the Lions may be able to step up with volunteerism. Also, we're looking at they were looking at doing, we were providing like gift baskets to people that move in there. And then the third part was communications. So those are subgroups that are working within the in the major group. The good thing is our residents really stepped up for this, because again, there are four of them. They each had expertise in each of those areas. So it just worked out great. And then between Todd, myself and Adam, we wound up sitting on, you probably figure out which ones, the pertinent committees. So it just worked out really well. And again, we're going to be meeting every month. So. And one last thing on that also is that in the interim between those meetings, Michael, our communications director. He's posting things out on our website. So there's updates periodically about what's going on with that project. So so far, it's working out pretty well. That's all I have.
Great. And Fred, sorry, what was the last, the last subgroup? I had metrics, exterior design, volunteerism.
Communications.
Awesome. Great. Thank you.
I'm community, even though there's a lead for each, we combine those for now, but they may be separated.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. Glad to hear that. Charles?
Because of the holiday break, I've yet to have a committee committee meeting since our last meeting. So nothing to report.
Lucky you. Thank you. Bob?
Nothing to report.
Awesome. David?
I unmute myself to be able to say the two things. One is that the. Disaster Preparedness Committee had a kickoff meeting for the year, and Todd Lando has been supporting us very well. And and I think that. The NRGs, which are expanding continually slowly but expanding, are taking in a couple of additional communities that are affected by floods, not just wildfires. And also, we brought into our discussion of preparedness. Earthquake response and preparedness. And so it's not just the fire emergencies alone, but but each of those three things. And I just, I wanted to mention that because of the climate adaptation committee's work and planning work has been. Featured in the news and so forth. I've had a lot of outreach to me and also on Nextdoor. And I've been trying primarily. I've been doing a lot of response primarily to just bring people back to the ground and say, look, look at the report itself, look at what it is considering. And point them in the direction of RJ Suko's excellent and tricky advice, which is, what is the plan? Well, it's a consideration of long term plans. It's not a construction project. So a lot of people hear the word plan and they think, oh, somebody's got blueprints and they're about to build a fifteen foot wall behind my house. That's not what's happening. So to that end, I want everybody to a a have a look at cortomaderaadaps.org, cortomaderaadaps.org. And if you're interested in either wildfire issues or flooding issues, there are two workshops, one on February third. In the afternoon, one on February fourth in the evening. Look at cortomaderaadaps.org and plan to come and participate in a constructive way. This is a wee wee exercise, not a we they exercise. We all want to try to do the right responsible thing for long term planning. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much, David. I had a CMSA meeting, nothing of note to report there. And the only other thing I wanted to mention is that I believe in February, the our league division is going to have a meeting with Senator McGuire. So I just wanted to put that on everybody's radar and say, if there's any. Topics that either council members or staff want me to to try and raise or steer the discussion towards, please just let me know, and I'm happy to try and raise that with them. Yeah, Fred?
Eli, I apologize. One other thing, just to get a plug in, and that is due to COVID. The line, Corredor Lions Club, the crab fest was canceled this year. So in place of it, the Lions are actually doing a crab test to go. So it's for thirty five dollars, you get two pounds of crab, Caesar salad and garlic bread. And just reminder, all the money that's raised, it goes back into the community. The other thing that through that crap, that's what they're doing is that they're buying gift, they're going to buy gift cards from local restaurants and use those as door prizes. So it's also supporting local businesses. It's February twenty seventh. And I think if you go on to the Corta Madera website and go into the weekly newsletter, the link is there how to get tickets. I just wanted to plug that. Thanks.
That's great. Thank you, Fred. That concludes our council reports. Any comments on the upcoming agenda? If not, then we're going to adjourn the council meeting and return to finish our SD two meeting, hopefully as quick as we can. So we'd come back to the SD two meeting. We already did our roll call. We're going to have open time for public comment now because we have not done that yet. So. This is a opportunity for any members of the public to comment on any items that are not on the sanitary district to meeting agenda. Members of the public will get three minutes apiece. If you'd like to comment on anything not on our agenda, please raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Not seen any hands up. Rebecca, do we have any email public comments for the sanitary district?
Sorry, I'm just refreshing quickly, and it does not appear that we have any emailed public comments for sanitary district items.
Okay, great. And no hands up. So we'll close public comment. There are no presentations. Item four is the consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not require further discussion. Any member of the council or staff can pull an item from the consent calendar. Any member of the public can also pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion or comment on the consent calendar as a whole. Any member of the council or staff, excuse me, the board or staff like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, turn it over to the public. Would any members of the public like to pull an item from our consent calendar? If so, please raise your hand via Zoom. Not seeing any, so we will close public comment and bring it back to the board for a motion on the consent calendar. Fred?
Yeah, go ahead and make the motion.
Thank you.
Consent items four A, four B.
Second.
Great. Thank you both. Rebecca?
Board member Casissa?
Yes.
Board member Lee?
Yes.
Board member Avasia?
Yes.
Board vice president.
Yes.
Board president.
Yes, thank you. Consent calendar, no public hearings. Item six, business items, we've already done six A, which was receiving our audit report. Now we have six B, which is consideration and possible adoption of resolution number one, twenty twenty one, approving revisions to the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget.
Thank you. This just has a few items in it. This budget revision. One is to decrease the interest revenue by a hundred and twenty thousand dollars due to lower interest rates. To increase operating expenditures by one hundred thousand dollars, because it appears that the water, water. Budget was not sufficient. And then three to carry over two hundred thousand dollars. From the prior year budget for the two thousand nineteen sewer rehabilitation project, as there were some. Expenditures in this year and the result of the the budget revision is that there'll be about seven million dollars in this fund. Including the two point five million dollars reserve.
Great. Thank you, Daria. Do we have any questions for staff on this? If not, we'll turn it over to the public. If any members of the public would like to comment on this item, please raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, do we have any email public comments?
We did not receive any email public comments.
Great. Thank you. And we have no hands up. So we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for discussion and a possible motion on this resolution. Fred?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion. We go ahead and prove the revisions to the two thousand twenty twenty one budget.
Second.
Great.
Board member Casissa?
Yes.
Board member Lee?
Yes.
Board member Avasia?
Yes.
Board vice president.
Yes.
Board president.
Yes, thank you very much, Rebecca. That brings us to item seven, district manager and board member reports. Is there a district manager report? Okay, great. Any board member reports? Awesome. Okay, any comments on our upcoming agenda? I think actually our next meeting is canceled. Is that right? I don't think we have a next agenda, so we're going to go ahead and adjourn for the evening.